Twenty twenty and it's our last meeting of the year. So, all right. Uh, let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Judy, if you'd please display the American flag. Join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. To the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, councilor is Judith Chandler.
Present.
John Keta.
Here.
Julie Wolf.
Here.
Isabel Burke.
Here.
Steve Brimner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Fortune.
Present and tonight I'm having pizza from Savelli's.
Very good. And Mayor John Graham.
Present. And tonight I had a burrito from the townhouse and it didn't last long. Soon as I got home, it was pretty well paperized. So I hope the rest of you are having a chance to, if you'd like to eat dinner during the meeting, please relax and enjoy yourselves a little bit. Great. Thank you. Okay. Um, next item of business is the approval of the agenda. I think you've all seen the agenda. We have a motion to approve. Julie?
Move to approve the agenda.
Okay, great. We have a motion. Do we have a second? A second from Mayor Pro Tem. Okay. All in favor, say aye or raise your hands. If your mouth's full, that's just fine. Okay. All right. Thanks. The passage unanimously. Um, okay. So next item is public consent on non-agenda items. Judy, do we have anybody who'd like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Well, if at this point I do not have any hands raised, I did have one person who would like to speak on an agenda item, but um, not, haven't heard anything from anyone for non-agendized items. So if anybody in the, in the attendee list would like to speak on a non-agendized item, if they can use the raise hand tool. Otherwise, we'll assume everybody wants to speak.
And I don't see anyone raising their hand, so. Okay, let's go ahead and move on. The next item is the consent calendar. Tonight, we have five items. Reappointment of Ann Nichols to the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority Citizen Advisory Committee. Uh, the Manny Awards Legacy Art Sculpture, the Spirit of Volunteerism. Third item is approval of construction contract for the Becker's Lane project. Fourth item is approval of December one, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes. And the fifth item is the approval of construction management, a construction management services contract with Basis Partners.
I would like to move that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of F three, approval of construction contract for Becker's Lane project. I do have some questions about that. Otherwise, I uh, move that we approve the rest of the consent calendar as uh, it is uh, as presented.
Have a second from Council Wolf. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so now we'll discuss the um, what was item F three, approval of construction contract for the Becker's Lane project. Uh, councillor Wolf, or excuse me, councillor Chandler, you had concerns, so why don't you take the floor?
Mayor, can we bring Dole over? Can we bring Dole over? Cause he's managing that contract.
Okay, that's a good idea. Let's bring Dole over so that he can respond to any question.
So. Okay, um, so I, I have several questions.
Councillor Chandler, could you hold off just a second till we get Dole on? So we want to make sure he can hear everything. Can you hear us, Dole?
Sure can.
Okay, Dole can hear us now. So councillor Chandler, you have the floor?
So I, I just want to reiterate to anyone who's listening in that this is a, a one hundred and fifty-nine page document. And I'm referring specifically to page sixteen. Um, so I have questions about uh, line two oh two dash zero 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 one zero, removal of trees. Um, we have fourteen units. Um, I have several questions. First of all, I was unable to attend the community meetings, the engagement meetings, uh, due to schedule conflicts about uh, the trees on Becker's Lane. So this line item says that there will be fourteen trees removed for a total of fifteen thousand four hundred dollars. So one, uh, I'm, I'm figuring that as eleven hundred dollars per tree. Was that what was the consensus of the group uh, community meeting that we were going to remove fourteen old growth trees? That's my first question. For fifteen thousand four hundred dollars.
So the price you see there is what the contractor bid, and we had nine bids, so I don't know what the other, other eight contractors bid, but um, that is the price that they looked at those trees and that's what they proposed. And it's not that that was the best price, but their overall price was the lowest price. And then your first point is, I'm sorry, cut out.
Not about price, it's about what did the community engagement meeting, uh, was it uh, in agreement that there was going to be fourteen old growth trees removed from the Becker's Lane Bridge project?
Yes.
Is that what consensus in the community meeting?
Correct.
Um, so moving on to two one two dash zero zero one zero zero, tree retention and protection. Uh, a, a unit of one for eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, almost twelve thousand dollars. We're, we're retaining one old growth tree for twelve thousand dollars. Is that my answer?
Uh, yes, that's how, that's how, that's what the plans are asking for. It's to protect the giant cottonwoods on the west side of Becker's.
Well, there's only one unit and so, so.
Well, it's lump sum.
Well, forgive me for being a freshman, but you know, I'm, I'm retained by the, the, the citizens of Manitou Springs to go through line item on these contracts and I, and I have, I've spent four hours looking at this contract. And I want to know what a line item of one versus fourteen trees that we're removing. A line item of one for preserving, it says one unit of tree protection. How many trees does that mean? How, that we're preserving?
So all the other ones.
Thank you.
No, I mean, I, I mean, basically, basically, we have to quantify and measure everything in the project. And that pay item, that lump sum pay item represents the way the plans communicated to protect all of the other trees. And I think, I think one of those includes, and the scope includes it, you know, in the plans. And of course, you are only looking through a small window. You know, you don't have the plan sheets in front of you that communicate the scope of that pay item. Um, but, but based on what the consensus for the community was, we wrote that pay item to reflect that those, those fourteen trees get removed and then everything else gets protected accordingly.
So uh, so what you're saying to me, I, I'm not fully understanding this. So on the uh, removal of trees, we have fourteen units at a cost of fifteen thousand four hundred dollars or one, eleven hundred dollars per unit. But what you're saying to me is that the tree retention is one unit, but it involves more than one tree. So I, I, so how do you communicate to me what fourteen units means? Does that mean more than fourteen trees are removed? Uh, I, I want some real clarity so I can really wrap my head around this. So please explain that to me.
Sure. So the fourteen units are each, that allows us to identify which trees that the plans, you know, the plans identified which trees to be removed. And it's fourteen of them and it's very specific on the plan sheets. Um, I was trying to pull those plan sheets up and I could even tell you perhaps what the specification is for the tree removal or the tree protection. Um, but the tree protection is basically to um, on, on one case, they're having to put fence around the trees to protect them. So that nothing incidentally gets near them. Um, and then it's also for the duration of the project. So part of that pay item there represents that they have to protect those trees for the whole duration of the project. It's not just, you know, like one time.
So, so just for clarification, uh, I want to make sure that the fourteen units means fourteen trees. And the tree retention means one unit equals one tree. So we are protecting one old growth tree for almost twelve thousand dollars versus we're removing fourteen trees at a eleven hundred dollars. What I'm saying is obviously it, it would motivate me if I um, uh, received my income from the city um, to want to take down trees because it's only a one thousand one hundred dollars to remove a tree, but almost twelve thousand dollars to save one tree.
So I think the confusion here is that that's fourteen each. So each one of those trees, and we have them clearly identified on the plan sheets. We have it by station, which the project will set up a stationing on the, the contract will come up and set stationing on the project. And then we actually have it offset from the center line of the project. So we, like, here's, here's one tree that gets removed to station fifteen plus zero three, twenty-six feet offset, offset right. So we are very specific about which trees. And those are the same trees that we did, the, the more colorful graphics that we used when we, when we presented that information um, to the public. We don't expect people to go to read black and white plan sheets to get confusing. So those are the ones we did, the yellow dots and, you know, brought a lot of emphasis to. The other, the other nuance that you're, they're getting on is that's a lump sum item, that's not an each item. So the way lump sum items work is the project is allowed to communicate a scope. And it could be, it could be anything. Um, and in this case, it says protect all the other trees, all of these things. Lay this fencing down for the duration of the project. So it's, so it's one lump sum. But, but until you were to read, and if I can find it fast enough, I can try to read it for you. Um, but that represents everything else. It's not just one tree. If that item was one each, then it would be that way.
But how, but how do I know that? I guess, I guess my question to you is.
The contractor does.
Oh, the contractor. So, so, so I should talk to the contractor about what that means because I guess, what I'm saying is, and, and, and I'm not really trying to, you know, throw your feet to the fire, is that um, I, I, I've been, I've been voted in by the, the, by the citizens of Manitou. And um, you're telling me two different things, that fourteen units equals one tree, but that the tree retention of one unit means how many trees? I want to know how many trees that means because I feel like there's a, a lot of um, gray area that's created to make city council members like myself go, oh yeah, let's, let's just, you know, let's just, you know, approve this contract. When I don't know what you're talking about. And I want, my job is to understand fully what you're talking about so that I can understand what one eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollar unit means.
Okay, so you'd like to know which trees are being protected?
Yeah. You know, but, but, but you said on the fourteen, that was fourteen trees. So when I'm, when I'm reading the contract at home, I mean, I don't have your brain to, to pick, so I'm reading a contract that I'm supposed to approve. And one unit doesn't necessarily mean one unit where fourteen units means fourteen trees. And uh, that's disturbing to me.
Well, um, the, again, the nuance there, and it's important, is that it's, it's LS, which, which means lump sum. And so in the project, we went through and identified the rest of the trees and they, and the, the language that those plans use is um, items or plans to, trying to pull it back up, um, trees to remain. And I can tell you this, I could, this is truth. This is a very tough part of this project. In fact, this project would have probably been advertised months prior, except for some of the concerns and challenges over those tree removal. I can guarantee you that we did our absolute best to represent what the community wanted in doing the final plan set. Now, the, the nuance you've picked up on is because the lump sum item, although it's just one, it's all encompassing. Because it doesn't actually cost very much to protect a tree. They just have to do a little work upfront. It costs a lot to pull out those old growth Siberian elms. They're big, large trees.
But you know what? Telling me though, so Dole, because I don't have your mastermind. And I am just a elected official trying to represent my community. I feel like you've represented it as the other way around, that you have fourteen units to remove a tree at a cost of fifteen thousand four hundred or eleven hundred dollars per tree versus saving one unit of tree at eleven thousand eight fifty-eight. So on paper, it looks to me like, oh my God, if we're talking about fourteen trees on this line and we're only talking about one tree on this line, I, what I need to tell my community that I understand this contract is, I understand what a unit is because what you're telling me, Dole, and I totally respect you. I, I mean, I, I appreciate every effort you put into this, but if you're saying on one line, it's fourteen equals one tree, but this one unit equals, I don't know how many trees, but you're not willing to tell me or can't tell me. I need to know that before I move forward on this contract. And then there, I have another additional landscaping question that segues into that, which I have the same problem with. So uh, I, I, I want to know how many trees we're saving for twelve thousand dollars. So I can go to the Manitou community and go, I voted to save X amount of trees for twelve thousand dollars. I don't want to go to the Manitou community and say, I don't know what you, one unit means. So please be clear. I, I just need some clarity on this. Thank you.
Councillor Chandler, if, if, if we may, Denise, you have your hand up.
I, I believe that you're, what I'm here, what I just heard is that on the west side, you're saving all those trees and on the east side, it's three trees that are being saved. So, and that was in the conversation. Um, and the plans, I believe, have that. Is that correct, Dole?
I was trying to pull up, I was trying to pull up some of the graphics that we created for the public meeting because those are, those are much more colorful.
Yeah, and just for the community that's weighing in tonight, those graphics aren't on this hundred and fifty-nine page contract, so I can't look at it. So otherwise, that, otherwise I would perhaps not be making this noise.
Well, and that brings up a good point. And, and really, this is the contract between Manitou Springs and the contractor. These are the legal binding agreements between Manitou Springs and the contractor. And so those, those graphics are really for public information and are not part of the, of the plans. They're really for the community to understand what we're doing, to be better, have better clarity. And so um, we would probably not ever include at this point, that type of graphic. This was, this was really what we think represented what the public agreed to, because it's a compromise, right? We all can agree that this was a compromise. A lot of people didn't want any trees cut down and a lot of people wanted the whole corridor, all the trees cut down and everything lit up and really bright. So we had to balance both extremes to get this very small, you know, deficient bridge replaced.
And, and I, I know that, Dole, and in the future, I think we should very much wait votes to the people that actually live in the community that we're trying to make the, you know, because we have all these people weighing in, but there are people that don't even live there. So yes, of course, I, you know, I want, I want all sorts of things in a community I don't live in. But my, my job, I feel like my job as an elected official is to be able to tell the residents of Manitou Springs, the voting people that put me in office, that I understood this contract to mean this, and I have not gotten that clarity from you. So does one unit equal one? Or does it different for either, every line? If it's different from every, for every line, I've got a really serious problem for this contract because um, you know, it's, it's easy to look at this one hundred and fifty-nine page contract and go, I, you know, I know what a pipe is. I know what a, I know what conduit is. I know what a curve and a gutter is. But when you start putting these things together and sneaking them in there as one unit equals this, I have some serious concerns about that. So I want to know, what my question is, if we're going to retain trees for the cost of almost twelve thousand dollars, how many trees are we retaining for twelve thousand dollars on Becker's Lane?
I believe it's, I believe it's three, Dole. I believe it's three, Dole. Can.
It's three.
Yeah.
On the east side.
Councillor Chandler, if I may, in that, in that breakdown, in the third column, you'll see a, the third column's titled unit. And it shows the, the basis, the way they, the engineers uh, tried to figure out the prices on these various costs. And in some cases, you'll see the unit is each. I believe that's what we're showing for the fourteen trees. So there, we're putting a price per, per each tree. As you go above it, you'll see an LS for lump sum. I think you've got square yards there. Sometimes they're charging by the hour, sometimes by the day. So there's kind of a little decoder ring effect in there.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I mean, and so you're asking me as an elective official to, to walk into muck. Because I'm not, I'm not a contractor, but I've done my best to read this thing. I've read this thing four times. And so I want to make clear that, so, and this is not just for me, it's for all council members. That when we're presenting a con, when we're presented with a contract, that we understand the contract. And I don't understand the contract. So what I'm hearing one of you say is it's one unit equals three trees. And on, I'm hearing Dole say on the, another line, one unit equals one tree. And so which one is it? Because we are, um, this is, this is a multimillion dollar contract. And I want to make sure that when I put my head on my pillow at night, that I, um, I didn't allow something to sneak by that missed my, missed me. And so I, you know, um, you know, we, we talk about drought, we talk about the environment, and we talk about being a tree city USA. I'm asking you as a city to inform me, does one unit equal one? Or does one unit equal three? Or is it different on each line? How do I enter this contract?
So two pieces of information I have for you that you're going to find fascinating. So we did get nine bidders on this project. Okay, so I pulled up the bid summary. And um, for that tree protection or tree retention and protection pay item, okay? We had bids, we had sixteen hundred dollar bids, twelve hundred dollar bids, six hundred dollar bids, five thousand dollar bids, eleven thousand dollar bids, six thousand dollar bids. And then this contractor, who is the low bid overall, we actually, we actually had someone at twenty thousand. And then, and then, of course, Native Son was at eleven thousand or whatever their number was. So we are not in control of the individual item. That is what the contractor thinks, is how much time and materials and effort he's going to need to do what the plans need him to do for the tree protection. Okay? Now, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go reverse here for a second, just to, just to do this. So we could have said, we could have said tree removal and identified the nine trees and said tree removal lump sum. And the contractor would have known that all of those trees get removed by that one pay item, that lump sum pay item. Now, by definition, a lump sum pay item has to only be, you can't pay like two lump sums. It's only ever up to one lump sum. So whenever you create a lump sum item, you have to be very careful that you have correctly qualified and quantified what you're asking the contractor to do. Typically.
Is it nine trees or?
Well, this is for the removal, not the keeping. I'm just giving you the opposite example. We could have then done what you're suggesting. We could have said, okay, save, save tree each, and we could have gone through and counted each tree that's being saved. And we could have done each and each if we wanted to, or each and lump sum. The reason why it was set up this way was because we wanted to clearly communicate that these nine trees are being removed. And we're going to be able to go out there and count them from, when we go out on site and we count the project, we can go and count. Yes, there are nine trees that were moved and we can go and pay for those each pay items. So it's nine times wherever that price is.
So is it?
Saying nine.
I'm sorry, that nine trees that are being removed or?
Whatever the plans say. I, I, I'm afraid that I don't remember the number of trees being.
There are, there are fourteen units listed.
So that's fourteen trees.
Okay, so that's fourteen trees. So why isn't it three trees on the tree retention? I, you know, you, you, I want transparency. And I want to work with you, but you're asking me as a council person to assume that I know in my brain when one equals one and one equals three. I want one to equal one in all contract. How, because can I go, how can I vote for something when I don't know what the hell it means?
I mean.
The mayor Pro Tem had her hand up too, so I'd like to be able to recognize her and have, she may have some insight into how this was done as well.
Um, no, just Judith, it's a unit of measure. And as, as the mayor said earlier, it's um, typical contractual language when you're trying to estimate cost. So lump sum, in this case, is a unit of measure. And I think Dole did a good job of explaining that in this case, the unit of measure is a number of trees. It's.
Right.
I would say that in the, um, if you go to the website, I believe, Dole, all the briefings that were given to the public are still on the website, correct?
Yes, yes. We recorded and posted it.
They are, which is why I'm having this conversation because I totally agree with you, Mayor Pro Tem Fortune, that one unit equals one tree. So on two zero two dash zero 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 one zero, removal of tree, number fourteen, any, any educated or reasonable person would say that means fourteen trees. But on the tree retention, there is a unit of one for almost twelve thousand dollars, which would lead me to believe either, wow, we have one really special tree.
I, I understand, but, but back a second because the unit of measure, it could be an each, as in one tree. It could be a box. It could be a pallet of boxes. You've heard, you've heard what people make mistakes when they order things, that they meant, you know, one, one package of toilet paper and they end up with three hundred packages of toilet paper. Because, you know, they, they ordered one pallet instead of one. So that's the difference between, the unit of measure in this case is.
Well, and I also, I can also weigh in on this. And here's, here's why we did it this way. Okay? Because the plans are very specific that they, I mean, I, I could pull up the, the project specification and I, I just was looking at it, but basically we talk about tree protection, we talk about um, not damaging adjacent trees. The reason why we did the nomenclature the way you're referring to is because it covers everything else. If we were to make a mistake and miss, let's say that we said, okay, cut down fourteen and save seven. Let's say that we made a mistake and there were actually eight trees to save. Okay? What happens to that eighth tree? It's an, it's an undefined item in the plans. The reason why we focused on the removal and then we are protecting everything else, the contractor is not, here's the deal. This is, I think this goes to your point. Go ahead, go ahead and ask me what happens if the contractor cuts down a fifteenth tree. We have a major problem.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we have a major problem because that was not, was agreed to. Two.
And we, and we should have a major problem if the citizens of Manitou have agreed. We should have a problem, Dole.
Yep, I totally agree with you. But, but, but think about this from the contractor's perspective. One, they are violating the contract. Two, they won't get paid for that work. There is not a contractor in this city that wants to cut down a fifty foot tall tree for free. That thing, that thing, those trees weigh twenty-five tons. I don't even know, right? They won't get paid for that work. They will be in violation of the contract and they're subject to all kinds of penalties.
Right. And like, the gardens, once it's gone, what's an old growth tree is gone, it's gone.
It's gone, which is why we had to negotiate with the community.
Well, then let me add this into the mix to make sure that we are, you, you have on um, two one four dash zero 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 one one, you have a line item for landscaping, one unit, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. How do I go back to the community and say, well, on this line, one equals one? How do I go back to the community and say, well, on this line, one equals one. But landscaping 28, almost $29,000, what does that mean to me? Does it mean that you're replacing these trees? What are you replacing them with? Uh, and this is the problem that I have with the city at large, writ large, is that we go, oh, you know, this, 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 this developer is gonna do this. And then they don't, and we go, oh, you know what, it was just a conceptual drawing. So, um, it, this is also on page 16 of 159. Where you have a lump sum for landscaping, but how do I go to the citizens of Manitou and say, well, we removed 14 trees. We saved somewhere in the neighborhood of one to three, I don't even know. I don't even know by this contract, but we have almost $29,000 worth of landscaping, but I don't know what that means either. Does that, what does that mean to me?
Counselor Chandler, so, several other people also want to speak to these, these points. I think they may be able to interject comments, uh, that would be useful at this point.
Right.
Denise had her hand up and then Mr. Parker. So if it's all right, let's, let's, uh, get their take on, on these things, then this may be a timely point to consider. Denise? Can't hear you Denise. I'm sorry, let's go to Mr. Parker and Denise, if maybe you can figure it out.
Yeah, I, I wanted to comment, I think one of the issues that Councilmember Chandler may be having is that. We don't have the full plans and specifications, um, attached as an exhibit to the contract that I'm seeing on the packet that I have. And so we have like what's called like a bid sheet. Which is generally just part of all the documents that a contractor will submit, um, in response to, um, an RFP. And typically we'd have, um, reference to the RFP and all the other documents, including plans and specifications. That are, would be referenced as part of the contract and exhibit. And then you would generally see all the details about what those line items you're looking at in the bid sheet represent. So I think when you're just looking at this bid sheet with just lines in it, I understand it would, you can't tell what it's about. You can just tell what the price is and generally what it covers. And so I think that Dole's been looking at like the actual plans and specs when he's been trying to respond to you. And so I think from what you read, you can't tell what anything represents. Um, and so what I would recommend we do is generally, um, include all the RFP documents. The plans and specs, you know, um. As part of the quote scope of services that's part of the contract. And if that was all attached and provided to you, you probably wouldn't have these questions.
Denise can. Denise, I see your mouth moving, but I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're real soft.
Okay, I'll try to speak up so you can at least hear me. Could I ask, can we take a quick five minute break? I need to talk to, to Dole real quick to make sure. And then we'll come back with the exact answer that Judith is asking for, because I think she's asking for the exact number of trees and make sure that we have that. So could we just take a five minute break real quick?
Yeah, okay, five minute break, so let's say 6:42.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chandler, to your point, when you, when you highlighted that that one pay item, I, I think if it's called landscaping. It's just called landscaping lump sum, okay? And, and you were wondering what the $28,000 was going for. So this is one plan sheet of 104, that the contractor bid. This is specific to the landscaping plan and this shows. All of the deciduous trees, the shrubs, the ornamental grouses, it gives their Latin name, the size. And it gives the design of them and it shows where they all go. So when the contractor bid that, that item two one four dash zero 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 one one landscaping. He was bidding to not only purchase all of these trees, but to also end shrubs and grasses, but also to install them. Per this exact location of these drawings. And that, you know, the trees are designed that when they reach full canopy, that they will not be in conflict with each other. And then the one thing I want to highlight on this plan sheet as well. Is we have identified there, um, those trees that are to be protected. And you, you can't, the font may not be very big, and I know Judy's screen is small. Um, but those are the, those are the trees that to be protected and those are the trees that are included in the protection for that other lump sum item.
So I have a question for you. Um, as anyone who knows anything about trees knows, that one small tree doesn't equal an old gross tree. So it was my understanding that in a community meeting, that there was an agreement that 10 trees would be removed, not 14. And that trees would be, uh, uh, replaced. Um, and that I am assuming is under landscaping to the tune of almost $29,000. My concern is that, um, I can't feel good about this if I don't know what the landscaping plan is for $29,000. To replace the 10 trees, not 14 trees that needed to be removed. So that we could, um, bury power lines and put in more concrete sidewalk. So I, I'm, I'm confused here. Because on one line item, um, two one four dash zero 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 one one, we have landscaping for 28,876. But it doesn't tell us what landscaping, what that means. And, and I, 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 I don't feel good about this, as I don't feel good about most projects in Manitou that I think we need to rethink. Um, how approach it and say, well, we can't just say one equals one on this line item. But we're gonna give you a lump sum bid on some kind of landscaping. To replace it, when I don't know what that is.
So can you, are you able to see, is, can everyone see Judy's screen? So it's, I, I can't do that math fast enough, but that lump sum landscaping item includes. Um, 17 trees, 25 shrubs. I'm gonna, I can't do the math fast enough, maybe 150 shrubs, 20 perennials. Or 200 perennials.
What size are those, are those trees though? Are we, are we replacing?
Four inch.
Four inch, four inch?
Caliper, yeah.
Four inch caliper, okay. So we're replacing 10 old growth canopy trees or 14, depending on how you, uh, 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 uh. Want to assume this contract reads with four inch caliber trees that will take 30 years plus to grow? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That's correct. We, when we spoke to the tree expert, they actually don't recommend replanting a tree that is too big. That there's a sweet spot for trees, and since this is actually near the creek, as you know, the air is colder for the majority of the year.
There is a. Trees, that's exactly why I'm having this conversation with you. Because if we don't get our shit together, and I will say shit together. And stop taking out 10 to 14 or so, or old growth trees. And replacing them with four inch trees that will not mature in my lifetime. We have to take a look at where we are here. And so first of all, so with regards to the contract. Um, I want one unit to equal one unit. So if I'm talking about a pipe, or I'm talking about concrete, or I'm talking about a tree. I want one unit to equal one unit on each line item. And, um, so apparently the tree don't meet that criteria for me. And also on the landscaping, it just has a, has a blanket number of $29,000. I want to know exactly what that means and what the community can, can, can expect from the landscaping plan. That will, uh, mature when most of us on this city council are dead. So, um, that, that's my input here, that I, I just think that we have to go moving forward with any contract, not just this one. Um, that we have to decide what a unit is, where we are. Are we sliding in three more trees we're taking out when the community said 10 trees and now there's 14 units? If, if one unit equals one unit on, on the removal of the tree. But one unit equals three on another line. Does 14 times three equally, so, so I just feel like, um, I feel like I am really kept in the dark. And asked to accept a contract that doesn't make complete sense to me. Did I say something, Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
And I'm sorry, I can't see everybody, so I don't know if other people are trying to talk or not. Um, I, I would like to get a feel for where the rest of council is. I, um, I believe that due diligence has been done on this contract. And I think that there are, I think Counselor Chandler, and no disrespect here, just contracts are difficult. And, um, you know, the unit of measure, I think there's a, a misunderstanding on that. That some sitting down with Dole might be helpful as opposed to, uh, doing it here. So I would like to get a feel for where the rest of council is on this contract. Uh, because I would like to get some movement on it, one way or the other.
Well, I would just, I'll just call on each council person and, and try to, we'll get a reading of the, the council's temperature. See, see how much further discussion might be required or if we're ready to, to make a motion, um. Councilman Bremner?
Okay, um, I, my feelings are in line with Nancy's. I'm, um, I think that our city, uh, has done due diligence. I think it's, uh, I don't think it's our place at city council to nitpick and, you know, get into the minor details. And, you know, second guess everything. And I'm, I'm happy with, with what the, the city's done, so that's where I stand.
Uh, Councilman Shada, what's your thoughts?
Um, well, I guess I'm happy with that. Dole was saying that all the trees on the west side.
John, you're really hard to hear. Councilman Shady, it's hard to understand you, what you're saying. But Mr. Shade, I didn't understand what you said, you're, you're coming over kind of garbled. No, there's still some reverberation.
I guess I'll have to call back in then.
Okay, well, okay, good, just quickly, John, do you want more discussion or about, ready to move on this?
I have some questions on the lighting, I think I am happy with the answers on the trees at this point.
Okay, all right, let's, uh, let's go on, uh, Counselor Woolbrook.
Um, I, I think, um. What, I'd like to know if we waited until the new year and everybody had a chance to look at this, with what are the consequences? Maybe Dole can answer that. I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm fine to move forward with this because these are the details in the contract. Um, and I feel like they've been vetted by city staff. But also it seems like there's a lot of questions here tonight, and I don't know if waiting until the first meeting in January is gonna be a problem.
Chance to respond to that here in a minute, uh, Counselor Wolf, what's your thoughts?
Um, that was exactly my same question, what Susan just asked. I wanted to know if there's any huge downside to delaying. Because I believe the public is entitled to know. Information that is just now being presented to us in micro print. So, and, and because there's so much painful history in Manitou. Painful recent history around trees being cut down without proper notice, without proper input, without proper consideration of whether it's necessary and so forth. We all know the nightmares, uh, because it's, it's a sensitive issue. So if we were to go ahead and just, you know, push this through, even though we really don't know how many trees are being removed. And, and, and other important things that, um, about the trees that tend to be very important to our public. And we just approve it, then, you know, I think we're not doing our job. On the other hand, you know, if it's gonna be a $10,000 a day penalty for not getting started or something, you know, maybe we should take that into consideration too. But as the, as the attorney said, this should have been provided, it wasn't provided, let's provide it, let's just push this out.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, if I could, I think you, you indicated you were ready to move on this, um.
Yeah, I mean, I could, um, you know, I'm, I'm counting and I've got Stephen, myself are already to move forward. Julie and Susan would like to know if it would be, um, feasible to wait. Um, John had, John Shade has some questions on light, so we don't have, you know, it's a pretty mixed bag at this point of where people are. So I think getting, um, Dole's opinion on if there, if it is prudent to wait on it. Or not if it's prudent, if it's feasible to wait or not would be useful for folks.
That's the next question then.
Mayor, can I say something?
Okay, Denise, yeah.
Um, if we can, we can pull Karen over, we have done already the public, um. Uh, we've gone through the public process, so I think there were two or three meetings with the public and they went through, I attended them. They did go through the landscaping and exactly what was, what was gonna be presented. And I do, um, believe our, um, Mary Ellen was part of all those meetings who agreed to that. But let me pull Karen over, who may be able to provide a little background on the public process for this, if that's okay, it will only take a few minutes.
Then we'll.
In the, in the interim, I would just like to respond to, um, Counselor Bremner's, uh, comment about getting into the dirt of contracts. Um, I am beginning to learn in my first year on council that, that is exactly my job, is to get into the dirt about contracts. Because if we don't, then we vote to pass them and after the fact, we go, oh my gosh, what did I pass? I didn't realize, and I'm beginning to realize that one of my most important job is to slog through these contracts. And take a look at and make sure that this is exactly what the citizens of Manitou wanted us to do. And I just want to say that, um, that, that is why I'm bringing this up. Um, this is a 159 page contract. And, um, it's easy to just go, oh my gosh, it's too many pages, I just want to vote for, I wanted to get it off my plate. But that's not what I'm here for. And so, um, i- if, if we have to slog through a couple of, of these things, um, if, if we don't, if, if, if it's, um. If getting through the dirt is too much for us, then why does city council exist would be my question. So I'm, I'm really grateful for the rest of the council's input. But, um, uh, this certainly impacts all of Manitou, certainly my neighborhood. And I am beginning to learn the hard lesson of, boy, I'm really okay with this project as long as it's not in my neighborhood. As long as it doesn't cause my light pollution or my, uh, traffic problem. Um, and so we need to stop that, we need to come together as a community and say, we are a whole entire city of Manitou. And look at these projects as they impact the city at large.
Thank you very much, okay.
If I could say something to that, um, I, you know, half of this is in my ward. So, uh, I, I think, um, I've also reviewed the contract, I also went, was able to go to one of the community meetings. I could not go to both of them. Um, I reviewed all the stuff on the webpage that was presented to the community. Um, so I think that I, not only have staff done their due diligence, I feel that I've done my due diligence. And I trust the rest of council has as well. I think what might be useful is, um, if at all possible, I know sometimes it's very hard to get to this before. You know, much before the meeting, but if, if the questions are, if we can raise the questions to staff before the council meeting. A lot of misunderstandings or lack of clarity might be cleared up. And we don't need to spend an hour on something that we anticipated was going to be a consent calendar item. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
I'd like to respond to that.
No, no, you've talked enough for now, it's time for Karen to speak and then Dole will speak and then we'll get back to council. Karen?
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, yes, I was, uh, very involved in this project, um. Kind of coordinating the public involvement aspect of the project and Dole was really on the engineering side of the project. And so we, um, just to backtrack a little bit, we did engage an arborist to evaluate the trees on the east side of the roadway. And, um, so he concluded that. The trees are in okay health now, but. the trees are in okay health now, but because their crowns have been, were so severely pruned that, um, it would, he assessed it would cause problems in the future, um, where branches would be weakened. And because of the cross-section of the roadway, it, it was not possible to keep these trees, because we just were not able to expand the right-of-way at all to include them. And so I do, I do have the concept plan, if that would be helpful to share. Would you, would you like me to bring that up?
Yeah, please.
Okay, let's see here. There was been a moment here. Let's see. Going to, I'm gonna grab the screen. So, um, can, can you see this plan?
Yes.
So this, this, as you recall, we, um, the trees were concerned at the September community meeting. And so, um, we, we also had some technical issues with the meeting. People joined in the meeting, and so we, we planned a second meeting on October 15th. And yeah, in the interim, we did engage the arborist, and so he evaluated all of these trees on the east side of the roadway. And so I was just reviewing his report. He noted, uh, 10 existing trees in this northern area towards, towards the intersection with El Paso, and five in the southern area. And so this is the proposed landscape plan. And so there's, there are three existing trees, um, that will be protected in the southern area. Um, they, we wanted to do a one-for-one replacement. We couldn't fit all the trees in this area. So thus we, uh, added some others along the trail here. Um, and we did, um, between meetings, we did reach out to members of the garden club, Mary Ellen Montgomery, Melody Doherty, um, were very helpful. Um, yeah, Mary Ellen, um, engaged with us in the landscape architect and, uh, strongly supported, endorsed the species that were selected for this area.
Karen, didn't, um, Melody also participate in the, to make sure there was some pollinator items here and included in the landscaping? Was that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes, yes. So, yeah, we will have, you know, some dense understory uh, below, below the trees in this area. Yeah, I, I think we've learned that our, our citizens don't always want like, you know, a really pristine looking landscape that they, you know, like to have kind of these layers and some depth, you know, a little, a little bit more of a natural look to it. Um, so I, I think that's kind of where we arrived at this meeting.
All right, thank you. Then we have a good question for Karen at this point. Well, she's got this graphic up. And I'm afraid I, I can't see everyone, so.
I have a question.
Okay, Julie, you know, if you would go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so Karen, um, I don't know if I, I don't know who to ask this question to. Um, so, um, does the contract incorporate by reference this specific drawing? Is it a requirement, or is it just another one of those things like somebody mentioned earlier, where, you know, the citizens get mad at city council because we approved something, and we say, oh, I didn't realize it was just a proposal that was presented at a, one of the many community engagement meetings, but it wasn't like a legal requirement. So is this a legal requirement?
Um, you know, I think I'd have to defer to Dole on this one, but this is the concept that we, we agreed on.
Yeah, I, I understand him, but I'm not interested in concepts. I don't care about concepts right now. My que, I mean, it's lovely. It's a nice concept. It's pretty, uh, whatever. I want to know if this is a legally incorporated by reference part of the contract. I guess that's a Jeff Parker question.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that question. So, uh, the only contract that I see is the version that's on, in the packet that you reviewed. And I don't, um, Councilmember Chandler referred to 159-page contract, so I don't have that version. My recommendation is, after reviewing this, is that, is that we should be referencing the plans and the specifications, the requirements, um, in the RFP, and any documents we think are important to basically, um, describe the scope of services and what's occurring. The version on, in the council pack that I, I'm reviewing doesn't do that. So the city council wants to approve it. I would recommend they approve it with, um, the direction to me to make, make some revisions to the contract to include, um, the details and this, and the specifications that would include information like this.
Thank you. Okay, then I'm ready to make a motion.
We also, the question is to, we wanted to get Dole's opinion as to whether deferring this would, uh, cause us hardship. So why, can we get that out? I think that would help inform our decision.
Yes, very much.
So Dole, you have the floor, and the question is, if we were to defer this, how much of a hardship does that present for everybody, the city mainly?
Um, so tip, I'll, I'll, to, to Jeff Parker's point, usually in the exhibit, Exhibit A, we will reference in the plans and the specifications by reference of the contractor bid. So that, that's usually how we do that, and it looks like here it says just the bid and not necessarily the plans and specs. Um, fortunately, I think that this is the best time of the year to delay a project for two weeks, if that's so what everyone decides to do. Um, the contractor was planning on getting potentially the notice to proceed this week if this contract got signed, and then they would start to get mobilized, stuff, materials ordered, subcontract authored, and then they were going to start January 4th. So, um, if, if we choose to delay approving this, that just delays their starting date by however many days that is. But there's, there's no penalty. There's no consequence except for delaying them getting started.
So Dole, the, the next date is like July or January? I can't remember the date of our next council meeting.
January 5th would be the first regular meeting, you know, in January. So that, that doesn't sound like that would be a huge hardship.
No, this is the, if this was, if this was April, it'd be a different story. But, um, this is, this is a great time of year. If, if we're going to delay a project, this would be the time to do it.
Well, I remember, uh, Mr. Shade had questions about lighting, but, uh, Councilor Wolf was ready to make a motion, so.
Mayor? I'll, I'll delay on the motion so that Mr. Shade can speak since he's been waiting a long time.
Mr. Mayor, I think my, uh, my questions were answered when Karen put up the slide that I also found on the Becker Street webpage about where the lighting is supposed to be going.
Okay, great. So your, your curiosity is satisfied for the moment?
Yes, for the lighting, it is.
Great, okay.
Mayor, we have two individuals that would like to speak if you weren't to allow that.
Well, I see, uh, Councilor Chandler, are these, uh, non-members of council, Denise? Oh, I see, okay, all right. Well, I see we have Corinne Toll and Jim Reese, both have their hands raised. Um, all right, so let's go ahead and entertain their comments. Um, Judy, if you could bring them over, Corinne Toll and, and Jim Reese.
I've gone ahead, um, and Corinne Toll should be coming over to speak.
Okay. Okay, and, uh, Corinne and Jim, uh, if you could, uh, limit your remarks to three minutes or less, that would be appreciated. Uh, and also we need to have, when you announce, uh, when you take the microphone, if you'd, uh, give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm going, this is Corinne Toll. Can you hear me?
Yes, uh-huh.
Oh, thank you. All right, so, uh, you all know that I have served on council in the past for six and a half years, and I don't ever remember 158-page contract. And, and I find that a bit appalling, uh, for any counselor who's not a lawyer to navigate. And so I really appreciate Judith Chandler's, uh, comments on, on trying to be more transparent. Why, why can't a contract be, uh, more concise? Uh, it seems to me that sometimes making them lengthier is, uh, a way of manipulation. So, you know, uh, the other thing that I really want, the other point I want to make is what are our values here in Manitou? We, we have a lot of people purporting to, to really respect nature and, and want to encourage it, and now we're looking at a very important road. And I, I agree that this Becker's Lane Road is, is, uh, uh, needs to be expanded. Uh, but, you know, it, what are we sacrificing in that process? So for, for me, it's, it's a question of transparency regarding contracts. And who are we as a community? That's all I have to say.
Corinne, like to provide us with your, um, your address for the record, please?
Sorry, yes, I'm at 457 Rizdahill's Boulevard in Manitou.
Thank you, Corinne. And now if we could hear from Jim Reese?
Okay, uh, hello, everybody. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, just wanted to address a couple of things. I think there's some confusing, and I think Dole addressed this, is that 159 pages, I think, is referring to the contract, construction documents that are typically that long. I mean, you've got all kinds of drawings and specifications, and so if you add all that up, yeah, it's a lot of technical information that the contractor needs, but not necessarily germane to understanding the project here uh, from the public standpoint. Uh, and so I think that's where the misunderstanding is about the length of the, of the contract. Uh, the other thing is, I wanted to kind of address the landscape plan, and I think Karen did a great job. Uh, but remember, this, the final landscape plan, and I think this goes back to Julie's comment, the final landscape plan incorporated all of the comments that were made at the public meeting, uh, that added more trees and preserves quite a few trees, actually, and created this understory. And a lot of that was direct input from a lot of the folks, uh, citizens of Manitou. Uh, Melody particularly had great input as to what the pollinators, uh, would like to see. And I think the, uh, they did a great job of incorporating that. So I think, uh, that we've listened to the public, and now I think we've got a great plan. And, and, you know, I don't know if council, everybody knows this, but I'm a landscape architect by training. And I think the species and the plants that they have picked out are excellent. Uh, they will be longstanding, uh, improvements. Uh, these trees are great street trees that they picked out, so I think they're, this is an outstanding plan. Uh, and then the last comment I have is, well, is, is about the timing. Uh, and, and Dole's right, you could delay this contract at this point, but let's not forget, this is a six-months window, and we really, especially from the urban renewal authorities' point of view, we really don't want to be into construction next summer.
No way!
Under store right now. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Mr. Reese, if you could provide me with your address for the record, please?
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, 520 Silver Springs Circle, Colorado Springs.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I see that also, uh, Alan Delwich would like to speak.
Yes.
So Judy, if we could, uh, bring Alan over?
Hi, uh, this is Alan Delwich. I live at 210 Villa Linda Vista, about 200 yards from where this project is. And I did participate in both community meetings, and I also had a, uh, meeting with, uh, Karen and Dole to talk about the lighting issues. But right now, what I'm concerned with is, you know, I believe at the community meetings, we wind a lot and fuss about the trees, and finally reluctantly said, okay, we understand why you have to get rid of the 10 trees, because they're not healthy, and you have to do the undergrounding of utilities, et cetera. So that's where we were. If you look at the project page on our city website regarding the Becker's Bridge project, it says, "The arborist recommended removing 10 trees," which is what we reluctantly agreed to. I'm concerned of, now we're saying 14 trees, and that looks like it's pretty much taking out everything on the east side. So I would love to have that resolved, have that explained by somebody, how 10 turned into 14. The other issue that, um, I don't know that we ever got a satisfactory resolution on was the lighting. And yes, you know, I'm, you know, I, I love the idea of having a vibrant URA. However, we have to remember, this is a neighborhood here that's being affected. And I think that we really have to take the time to understand it and get down in the muck if we have to. Whether it was my neighborhood or not, I think it's really important that we get these issues uh, really clearly resolved. And I really appreciate Councilor Chandler's, uh, sticking to this and bringing it up and holding our feet to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delwich. Let's see, I believe that's everyone who wanted to speak to this matter. All right, uh, let's see, Councilor Chandler, do you have your hand up?
I did. Um, I, I just want to say something generally, and I, I don't know that it really refers to exactly this contract, but I just want to say that I have, um, you know, I have a master's degree in science. I don't have a master's degree in, uh, construction. Um, but when I was elected to be a city council member, I met in February before COVID with engineers and people on Becker's Lane to talk about the Becker's Lane Bridge. And I said, "In February of 2020, our tree, our, our, how many of our old growth trees are going to be sacrificed?" And when I met with people there on that February day, I was told, "No tree, uh, no old growth trees are going to come out." And I said, "Good, because we need the canopy. We need this. We need the protection." And then, uh, come down the road, um, everything changed. And I have learned, and it has been a tremendous learning process, both good and bad and ugly, that, um, things change. But the bottom line is that if I don't understand a contract that I read for four hours, where I don't know where one unit equals one unit, or one unit equals three units, or four units, whether it's this contract or any other contract, how can I look in the eyes of my fellow Manitoids and say, "I voted in your best interest"? So moving forward, we need to have a clear understanding and not, and not, um, hide or, um, or, um, window dress, things that we want to slide through, so that no one ever comes back to me and says, "Wow, you voted for this, and that was not what we wanted." So my, my thing is, we, we have a couple line items here. We have removal of 14 trees at 15,400, which I am hearing you say is one unit equals one unit. And then on another line, I have tree retention, which I'm hearing is almost $12,000 to unit, $12,000, where one unit equals three units, three trees, because I hear three trees are being preserved. I want to know which trees those are. And then I have a landscape, uh, line item of almost $29,000, which does not identify any of the particular landscaping that is being done. It's just a, a blanket line item. So, um, it's, it's not just for this contract, but contracts going forward, I'm disappointed. Because if I'm supposed to vote for things for my constituents, I want to, I want to be able to look you in the eye and say, "I, I understand what I was voting for." And I feel like, I'm going to say this, that this, that these things are, uh, designed to really make me Uh, designed to really make me. Wonder what I'm voting for and I don't want to have that experience ever again. I have one more question and that is on line item two one one dash zero three zero five. De-watering. For thirty eight thousand sixteen dollars. Um. What is de-watering and why are we spending thirty eight thousand sixteen dollars on it?
Can you respond to that, please?
So de-watering occurs when we start drilling caissons. So we drill the deep foundations on this bridge. You know, we obviously can't allow water to get in the holes because we have to build a tie rebar, we have to check the depth. We have to be able to measure it. And so the de-watering is to anticipate the fact that the the water will groundwater. Creek water will seep into the holes and so it allows the contractor to keep those holes dry. For the whole duration and then to put the water back into the creek that seeped out. And again, okay, the again, the way that is set up is we tell the contractor, you need to, you need to perform. And I also want to point out. All of these specifications, standards and details. Are all the same standards and details that C dot uses. So all of these pay items to use each and lump sum for landscaping, that is an industry standard. You know, C dot does a hundred and fifty jobs a year with those same specifications. So I think the big, the big concern for you is you, and it's fine with me, we have it. We can provide the specifications and the plan sheets whenever we provide a contract. I terrific. If you'd like to read through them and look at that, that, I mean, that would be helpful. We already have it. It's no big deal to attach it. Okay? Um, that's de-watering.
So in response, I want to say that after looking at this agreement, um, I I, you know, um. I I have a master's degree in something else, but I understand topsoil and I understand gutters and I understand sidewalks. But I'm going to call you on things I don't understand and I don't know what de-watering is. So if I'm going to represent the. Uh, citizens of Manitou and not everyone on city council that runs for city council can have a. An engineer's degree, I'm going to ask you about these things and I just so, just so I make sure that I understand what that means. I, if if we're going to spend thirty eight thousand dollars on something, I just want to know what it is and. And and I realize my my ineptness or or or, you know, or 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 a non-education, I I can certainly probably Google these things. But the these are things that in in a, in a, in a contract this um, complex. Um, you know, I applaud you, I applaud you. My concern is I was told two separate things. February, I was told. That no old growth trees were going to going down and now then I was told they were all going down and then. There was a community, you know, process. And so then I'm learning in this contract, one equals one on one light item, but one. Equals three on another light item and I just want to. Acknowledge to the city that. Any, any person, any person, if you're listening in and you're, you know, you 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 just want to know what this is about, you should be able to get online. And understand this contract and not have to go, holy shit, I don't know what this means. And so, you know, that that's where I'm coming from is, is, um, you know what? You know, I I've learned the hard way. You know what? Trees are going to come out. Old growth trees are going to come out. You're going to take out how many old growth trees you're going to take out, but my job is to stop and say. Where are, where is our money being spent? Are we respecting the? People of Manitou? In any contract, in any contract and can any, can any average person? Understand it because we can't.
So.
The problem.
Yeah. Uh, so I have, I have three things to make here. So it sounds like the the real issue here is the confusion between. The bid items suggesting fourteen tree removal. And then like even like Alan suggested that the assumption was ten. And I, I don't remember the details and I, we can look into this and we can see if if it was just a mistake in the bid tab. And the nice thing is. Is I can go and tell the contractor, we're going to change it. There was a mistake and it's fourteen was wrong. It's actually ten and they'll say, okay, great. And the reason why we have that each item is all I gotta do is remove four from the each. There's ten left and they know how much to get paid per tree. It works out great, but I, again, I don't know the final number. I just, I don't, I don't remember. There's, you know, it's been about a thousand numbers since then. So we will get, we will find out. What was agreed to and confirmed. Okay? The other thing is this Becker's project has been having bi-weekly meetings for the last year. Um, perhaps we can start inviting council to all these capital improvement bi-weekly meetings.
No. They have to be public if you do that, so.
Oh, that's, I always forget about that. I don't know how else to communicate for you to get through and ask about bid items. And you got to remember too. And and this is, this is, this is maybe why it puts you in a tough spot. The plans and specifications we put out are for the contractors to be able to read and interpret to go build the job. So they are written in language and definitions that they're comfortable with, that they're used to, that are industry standards that they bid. You know, ten jobs a year and they know exactly what these line items mean. And like you said, you you don't, right? This is, this is a foreign language, just like a lot of other things are foreign to me. Um, but this is just an industry standard for them. So I I don't, I don't know how to bridge that gap. Um, but these plans and specs go out to the contractors. You know, the public and in the public information is where we really try to engage the public.
This is exactly the point I'm trying to make, Dole, and thank you for that because you know what? Um, I I I I I speak in medical ease. I can talk in medical language that you don't even understand. And you can talk in contractor language that I don't understand. But the bottom line is we we represent a community of Manitou. That has, that wants to understand, right? So if I can't even get through a contract. Right? With a master's degree. How can I tell the citizens of Manitou that I'm representing you? With the best interest of everything that you said you wanted and that's the biggest problem I have with this. City and other governments is that we have to develop a language that is inclusive. That if my neighbor next door said, I got, I, you know, I looked at the packet and I looked at that hundred and fifty nine page.
Chandler, I think we understand your point, Counselor Chandler. So could you? Could you wrap it up, please?
Well, I, you know, I can, I can, Mayor, that, you know what, you, you and I and everybody on council represent the citizens of Manitou. And we need to speak in a language. Including our contractual language. That people can understand and actually be able to ask questions about. That's it.
Believe Counselor Wolf, you were entertaining a motion, perhaps? You have the floor?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to move to postpone this discussion to January fifth. I would like um. The contract to incorporate by reference all of the mandatory drawings that are mandatory, if they're going to be mandatory. And particularly regarding landscaping as well as lighting. So that was another big controversial thing. People were very upset about the lighting and the feedback I got was. That those community meetings, they left the community meetings where they were told, well, too bad. The lighting is the way it is because that's the way they do it in Colorado Springs and the citizens were very angry. So I want those drawings to be not just concept plans that are nice ideas. But to be a mandatory part of the contract because I don't see them as being part of exhibit A. I agree with. Chandler that we have had a lack of disclosure, not intentional necessarily, but we need these drawings, we need to see these pictures. And 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 it's no excuse to say, oh. Well, the citizens should have gone to that meeting and they didn't, so too bad. No. They have the right to go to the packet and see what we're voting on and see if they want to give input and see the drawings themselves and see what's being proposed. I want to know what's specifically what the outcome of the lighting dispute was. And so have the contract redrawn so it's properly tightened up. And and then we can talk about it on January fifth. So um. That's my motion. I'm sorry, it wasn't a very clear motion. Do you want me to restate it just to say postpone to January fifth with much more information, please?
That's what I would prefer, Julie, if you would make it, simplify it to January fifth with the considerations. Of the discussion tonight as opposed to the specifics. Or or specifically to landscaping and um, uh, tree removal and.
Lighting.
Lighting, thank you.
Thank you. Is that a second, Nancy?
A second.
I'm sorry, who, who, Counselor Chandler, did you second?
I did.
Okay, second, okay, so we have motion, second. Any further discussion? Okay, so basically the motion is to postpone this item until January the fifth. To incorporate the discussion points into the um. To to look into that, to clarify that, particularly with respect to lighting. To the trees and that the drawings be incorporated as part of the contract.
As part of the, and as part of the packet.
Sure.
So that it's public.
Public, okay, so I hope I restated your motion, Julie. Is that a fair statement? Okay.
Subject to my changes, yeah, it wasn't comprehensive, but it was part of it. Uh, the the part that you missed was that I I want the packet. To include the information we're talking about, including the drawings and the new and improved contract. I don't want the public to be told, oh, well, you don't get to see it unless you go to the Becker Street website or. Sorry, you missed the meeting. I I think it should be in the packet. So that's the part you missed.
All right, thank you for that clarification. If there's any further discussion? Okay, if not, let's vote all in favor of postponing until January the fifth. Say aye, raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay.
John, could I make another recommendation? That perhaps um, we could find a course for council on contracting because it's a very, 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 very complex thing. And um, to have a better understanding of how contracts are written, et cetera, et cetera, I think might be helpful.
Uh, may I comment on that?
Please, Julie.
Uh, yeah, rather than us going to school on contract law, which is like, good luck with that. I would suggest that it might be helpful if there are like a little key, like a little legend at the bottom of the page. P S, this word means this or P S. Uh, for more information on landscaping, go to the drawing at section exhibit A dash twenty two. Or, you know, if if you want to know what rebar is, you know, look it up on Google. Uh, there's some kind of little key would be fine and that way we can track what's being said. Uh, rather than learning how to read a contract.
And I believe also that the Carden Municipal League, I think they have some materials, it's kind of a layman's quick guide to contracts, which is. Maybe I could call it the cartoon version of contracts, which might also be helpful for for some folks. Uh, Dole, you have a follow-on comment for this?
So what you are describing is such a difficult thing only because it's a whole, it's a whole industry. I mean, it just like if I went to worked with Ms. Chandler, I mean, I would have no idea what she said when she says C Cs and IV and. That's, that's my medical knowledge. I tend to just faint when I walk into an ER anyways. Um, so I can present the information and I'm happy to respond to specific questions. Um, I I all, I also love to give tours of job sites and help people actually see what's going on and to point stuff out. So uh, I'm happy to provide information, but to provide a key, I I don't even. I don't even, I don't even know where to begin with something like that.
So what if we just, what, let's work on putting this together with Jeff and see what we can do for the next time and try to include everything that's been requested. So let's see what we can do and then we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Well, so we've now finished with the consent calendar, basically. Um, we have a couple of public hearings. Uh, the history was that these are both second, uh, second reading. They seem to be fairly uncontroversial. Um. We've been at this an hour and a half. We did have a short break. Would anyone care to take a break now? Come back to it or do you want to push on? I'm sorry, Judith, what was that? Was that for for taking a break?
Can we take five minutes?
Okay, five minutes. I've got seven thirty five. Let's be back seven forty.
Mayor, before we, before we take a break, can I just want to say, I I really want, I want. Council to know that there was, we were never trying nor was any staff trying to hide anything. I think we were trying to be as transparent. Probably more transparent than ever by listing every single thing possible. But you had some great questions and and what does this mean? What does that mean? So we'll. Work on that and we'll come back with a more comprehensive um, contract, but I will say. Dole nor Karen nor anybody was trying to hide any time, anything at any time. So thank you.
Let's say seven forty two, okay? See y'all and. Looks like we've got everybody but Mr. Parker. Nope, there he is. Okay, great. Let's go ahead and get started then. Um. Our next item of business is second reading and public hearing of ordinance number one five two zero. An ordinance vacating a portion of the, of the Fairview Avenue right of way. Adjacent to the property known as five fifteen Roxton Avenue, City of Manitou Springs, El Paso County, Colorado. So first we'll start with city staff. Um, of course, we discussed this two weeks ago. Um, Michelle, I guess she'll be briefing us on this. So if you could bring us up to speed with any additions, corrections, comments, that sort of thing. You have the floor?
Uh, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I really don't have any additions other than to add to what I presented at the last meeting. And you have the same ordinance in your packet. Uh, this is. Uh, for unused right of way that uh, actually some of the cog operation is. Located on and we're trying to go through the replat process, which was required by the development. I'm sorry, the conditional use for the cog. Um, and so to clean that up. Uh, we've, staff is required that they go through the vacation of right of way. Um, and they do own the property on either side of this right of way. So I'm I'm more than happy to try to answer questions. Um, and any kind of issues that might come up.
Have a question for Michelle at this point? Apparently none. Okay, thank you. Um, what we'd, we'd next like to hear from the applicant. Um. Judy, I see Mr. Johnston is in the audience. Has he indicated that he'd like to speak or? Judy, you're muted. I can't hear you. If you could bring Mr. Johnston over, that'd be good. Judy, you're muted. Can you be, Mr. Johnston? Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, no, uh, no comments from us. Appreciate staff's help on this. This has been an. An interesting process to go through as we've uh. Uncovered the the right of way and trying to make all our parcels of land that we own felt to get fit together. As a part of our requirement to meet here. Um, but uh, just happy to get it all done and and move forward.
Great, thank you. Um, well, next I will open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. So the floor will now be opened up to any members of the public who'd like to make a comment. Uh, so if you're in the audience and you'd like to speak to this, please uh, use the raise hand feature in um, in Zoom. So the city clerk will. And then in council, no, do you wish to address this? This wasn't very controversial, so I'm not surprised. I don't see any hands out there. Um, Judy, had anyone asked to to address this? Okay, not surprised. All right, in that case, I will close the public hearing portion, the public comment. Um, counsel, do you have any questions for either city staff or for the applicant? Okay, I don't see any discussion then. Um, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we move approval of ordinance number fifteen twenty.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Shada.
A second.
Counsel, both counselors, Chandler and Wolf will second, so it sounds like we're ready. Um, any further discussion? No? Okay, all in favor of approving? Raise your hand. Say aye. Aye? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnston, thank you. Michelle.
Thank you, everybody.
Very much. Okay, very good. All right, uh, next. Uh, next item is second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1720, an ordinance, amending Title VII of the Manitou Springs Municipal Code to move animal-related fees from the municipal code to a fee schedule. Okay, and this will be a public hearing. First, we'll hear from city staff, if they have any comments they want to make. Okay, so. Okay, Becky, you have the floor?
Okay, so, this is a very non-controversial, um, ordinance, just updating our code, taking out some money amounts that we hadn't realized were in there. But, I do have a change, which has been, uh, brought to my attention by our city administrator. And I had thought, we had already taken care of this whole thing, and I was like, it's too late, we'll have to bring it again next year for a new ordinance. But then she was like, no, it's tonight. So, here I am. And the change is this. If you read the rabies area of the code, and it's also in the ordinance, because it was taking out the money amount, but it says, renew the rabies vaccine every two years. Well, everyone that has a dog knows that you can go three years now, there are three-year rabies vaccines. So, uh, we would like to go ahead and clean up the code there. Can, Jeff, is it okay to change the amendment to say, I mean, the ordinance to say, and, uh, change the rabies vaccine, to, uh, current, where we take out that two-year business?
Yeah, so, city council can basically approve the ordinance with, with, uh, the revision that you're basically recommending, if they want to do that. And then, it would be approved with that revision, we'd make it, and then the published version would basically have that revision in it.
Okay. See, because the Humane Society, they don't specify, it has to be a three-year or a two-year, or anything. You just say, you have to have a current rabies vaccination, a rec, a rabies, uh, vaccination certificate, or whatever it is. And so, we just want to make our code match, uh, the Humane Society, and not make people who have a three-year, uh, rabies, uh, vaccine, go after only two years to get the, the dog re-vaccinated, when, when it's good for another year. So, we just want to clean that up.
Becca, your recommendation is that it just reads a current rabies vaccine, correct? Because they could get a one-year or a three-year, is that correct?
Exactly, we don't know what they're getting, so let's make it just current.
Just, uh, I'm just trying to find where that is in the code, and, and I guess, you know, my only concern is, is like, we got to make sure people understand what current means. I mean, there's got to be some reference to what is current.
So, we saw. Can I, can I just say that that was one of my questions, and I have three dogs, and, uh, rabies vaccines in El Paso County are either one year or three years, and there is no two-year vaccine now. So, if we put it as current El Paso County guidelines, would that suffice?
Jeff, it's at 7.0702, uh, 2O.
Yeah.
B.
The.
Jeff, what if you said something like us, that, you know, you cannot have an expired, you cannot have one that, that has expired? I don't know if that word is good enough for the medical terminology, but, rather than current, just not expired.
Yeah, I guess, uh, a ra, uh, you know, a rabies vaccine, that, uh, I guess that makes sense, I, um, let me see here. Yeah, so, I, um, read, it says, I think it can be here.
Look at paragraph D, under the, the section.
Well, I would say the cat or dog, um, must maintain, um, maintain, uh, current rabies, um, vaccination. Um, as we, you know, I guess, as required by, I guess it would be, um, generally accepted veterinary practices, or something like that. Because then, maybe it's four years, they can give ten-year rabies vaccines, I don't know. Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, I like saying current.
Or could we say, as required by the Humane Society, because they're the ones that's, by the El Paso County?
We could do that. I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess my problem is, is do they actually, does the Humane Society, like, require vaccines?
They do, but they just say current.
Right, but I mean, I, I guess I'm wondering, like, why, I, I don't think they actually have any, like, requirements, like, either the Humane Society, and so, right, I, I mean, I think that we just, we want to have a, a current vaccine that has not expired.
But, but it's my understanding that El Paso County requires a current rabies vaccine, and that is either every one or three years, and the Humane Society must adhere to that, so, um, ju, I have three dogs, so, I just know that, just because my vet says so. So, I have three-year rabies vaccines for all of my dogs, but, um, it's my understanding that you either get a one-year or a three-year rabies vaccine for dogs and cats.
Well, Jeff, why don't we just say it has to be in compliance with the county, uh, regulations? That's a lot better than the Humane Society.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would, that would.
The Humane, the Humane Society is responsible for licensing, and this is a licensing requirement. You have to show proof of a cur, current rabies vaccine in accordance with cur, uh, veterinary practice, um, in order to obtain a license with the Humane Society that licenses for Manitou Springs.
Right, we, we deliberately didn't want to reference Humane Society in our code, uh, because if the names or something changed, then we'd have to go and change it again. But, in this case, uh, I'm open. I, I defer to the expert.
I, I would probably just change that second sentence to say, rabies vaccinations, um, shall be kept current, according to, uh, maybe you could say El Paso County, I guess, according to El Paso County, or we could say according to, uh, generally accepted veterinary practices, and then.
It's in El Paso County.
Mm-hmm, that'd be fine.
In El Paso County, so that we're not doing a nationwide assessment.
So, to, to go back over that, how should that sentence read? And where would it be located?
So, it would be in 7.07, 020 subsection B.
B, okay.
The second sentence in that section, um, I would just say, uh, rabies inoculation shall be maintained, shall be, shall be maintained for such animals according to, um, generally accepted veterinary practices in El Paso County. Writing it down while I speak quickly.
I'll second that.
In a second, okay, so, any fir. Do we have any further discussion then?
Who made the motion? Who made the motion, Judy? Do we know who made the motion?
We don't have a motion yet.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
I was pretending that Jeff made the motion.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Julie, I thought you were making the motion there, I'm sorry.
No, I was seconding Jeff, but I, I can do it, I, I.
Do we have to open up the public hearing first?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, there, since there was an applicant, I, I was out of sight, out of mind, my apologies. So, you're, you're correct. Um, so this is a public hearing, now I will open up the, uh, the meaning for public comment on this topic. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this, please raise your hand on the, uh, using the Zoom feature. Judy, do we have any, did we have anyone contact you, or guys? Okay, and I'm not surprised, it was not, not very controversial. Okay, appearing, it appears that there's, uh, no one wants to talk to this, uh, no one in the audience, so, I will close the public hearing, and we'll, okay, I think we're back to where we were a minute ago. Um, Mr. Parker, you were crafting the sentence.
Uh, yeah, it would say, rabies inoculation shall be maintained for such animals according to generally accepted veterinary practices in El Paso County. And I can send over a revised version with that language for Judy to post.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay. So, do we have a motion? Uh, Counselor Wolf?
I move to approve ordinance number 1720, subject to the, uh, change just identified by our city attorney, Jeff Parker.
Thank you, do we have a second? Yeah, the second from, uh, Mayor Protem. Okay, any further discussion? Apparently not, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, Becca, thank you very much.
I'll be back.
Okay, all righty, uh, next item. Resolution number 3620, a resolution to affirm support for expansion of the historic, the historical Carnegie Library Building located at 710 Manitou Avenue, Manitou Springs, Colorado. And, as you all recall, this was something we discussed, or heard about last week during the work session. So. The text is in the packet.
Are you ready for a motion? Do we want to discuss it?
Do we have, uh?
We have.
Any discussion? Judy, did, was this the, uh, issue that we had someone for public comment, or?
Yes.
Probably.
About the library.
Okay, did, um, okay, was, was there, okay, was there someone, okay, was that Bob Todd, or Christine, or? Bob Todd?
Bob Todd.
Okay, I see he's in the audience, um. Mr. Todd, if you, uh, want to speak to this, could you raise your hand in the Zoom feature? Okay, I guess he's over. All righty.
He's muted.
I just unmuted myself, is that correct?
Yeah, you're, you're not muted, we can hear you, Bob, we can't see you.
Okay, and what I've asked Judy to do is put up two charts. One is an email that I sent to counsel at 2 o'clock today, and the other is the attachment to that email. I was at my home office.
Bob, Bob, we need you to, uh, give us your address, okay?
Okay.
And, and I would also mention, if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Bob Todd, 20 Manitou Terrace, Manitou Springs. An administrative item, trying to coordinate with Julie, pulling up two charts. One chart is an email, Judy, uh, Judy has that. The, in all council members received that at 2 o'clock today, so I think some of you responded to that email. Uh, and then, secondly, uh, pulling up this red line, which, uh, Judy, I'm now looking at it, it looks like you were able to open that on a PC and show the actual red line, thank you. Unfortunately, council members who looked at this with their iPad, uh, I don't believe you had an app that allowed you to see the actual red light, so, you now have it on your screen. So, I'm going to go over to the summary email that introduces this. This email was put together after an hour meeting this morning with Christine and Rob Dannen. And the reason why you see a red line is the following. In 2016, which would have been Nicole Nicoletti's counsel, was the final time the counsel looked at the Thorpe, uh, draft architectural plans. The direction that was given to Mr. Thorpe and the planning department was to enter into a, an analysis of what functions are going to be in the library, and at what cost, and to have a public engagement process that would optimize the library, so final architectural plans could be drafted up, and then proceed to getting final cost estimates. What happened was, Mr. Thorpe was given $50,000 to do that. He started the work, to come up with different scenarios based on counsel's input, as to modifications counsel would like to have seen or fact, be factored in, as well as work with the library to know exactly what functions were going to meeting rooms and so forth. Mr. Thorpe started that process, came back to counsel and said, you all have provided you with $50,000 to do that, I'm more than happy to do that, but my major concern is, you are also presently looking at a fire, uh, complex, and you've been discussing having to have a capital plan, and you've been discussing having to have a mechanism to fund the library. You know, with all due respect, I would suggest you put me on furlough until you've figured out a way to raise the kind of capital we're talking about. He had that estimate of $3 million, which you've heard before. That was the end of counsel's participation in this process, although the planning commission, I believe, went through a quasi-digital process, looking at the plans, but counsel, this is a major development, never approved it, because that was what was to happen. That's where the, the things were frozen. Fast forward to Ken Giray's counsel, and as you know, right at the end, this project was added to the MAC. But, the project itself was still based on draft architectural plans, this optimization process had not gone through. Uh, what function are you getting for what cost? So, in your cover memo, you see the six items that were left as being open before we would be at final architectural dr, uh, at that stage. When you read the ordinance, the ordinance assumes that we have these final, architectural concept documents, which are be, be, to be turned into, uh, construction documents. So, final cost estimates can be done. Well, this is the cart before the horse, which is really why you see all those red line edits. And, that particular discussion, again, I had an hour discussion with Christine and with Rob. Christine filed the general drift of this, and the need to do some backfilling, uh, including, the first step would actually be to do an RFP to architects to finish the final, uh, concept designs, and get agreement on.
Bob, we need you to sum up, okay?
This document does not reflect that, and therefore, my recommendation is, just like you had to do with the Becker's Lane Lodge, is allow this thing to be tweaked along the lines of the red lines, this is not the meeting to do that, and come back on January 5th, I believe it is, with a resolution that is factually correct. Otherwise, this resolution, if approved, is draft that is not factually correct. And that would be my issue with it. Myself personally, I 100% support the library. I was involved with the, the Matt Kavanaugh effort to do, to get this public financing. I've not had the time to join Rob's group as a citizen to do that, I would have otherwise done it. Uh, but I need to step in with this historical background, and I think Susan and Nancy can vouch for it, as well as all the council members on Ken Giray's counsel, that's into my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Todd, okay. Thank you, and Judy, if you'd take the screen down, please?
Yep.
Okay. Judy, I don't know if anyone else had expressed an interest in, in speaking to this, uh, I see Christine is here. Well, perhaps counsel, if anyone has questions or comments, this would be the, the next step. Any council members have questions or comments? Mayor Protem?
Um, a couple of things, one is, um, I was quite comfortable with the, um, resolution as written. Um, and I can see, though, where Mr. Todd may have interpreted it slightly differently than I did. I interpreted it that the RFP was for the final design, um, and that, that could be, um, that the Thorpe design was the beginning, and the co, the concept, not the Thorpe design, but the Thorpe concept, really. And that a final design would be done from that concept, so, um, I, again, think that the resolution that we had as a, um, monument to the meeting that we had back in October, that's all that it was intended. monument to the meeting that we had back in October, that's all that it was intended to capture. Additionally, I believe I read Mr. Todd's email that Rob Dannen's group, or Rob, because I don't think he's had a task force meeting since this came at the last minute today, was not in agreement with Mr. Todd's recommendations. So I'd like to hear from Rob and Christine as to what the city staff is recommending on this.
Council has no objections. We'll hear from Christine.
Would you like me to bring Rob over as well at this time?
Please, please do that. Please do, Sylvia. Christine, do you have comments on this?
Good evening. Thank you. I don't have any further comments or suggestions for clarification. We are, we are trying to just simply monument the discussion at the meeting and factual meeting minutes and things like that. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we now have Mr. Dannen present. Mr. Dannen, do you have comments? You're muted, Rob. Rob, you're muted.
I will, I always promised myself I would never be caught muted. And I just ruined my streak. So I didn't catch all of Christine's part because I was still being brought in. But I concur with Nancy in terms of the resolution was really almost like a diary of what we've done, starting, well, we started before that, but from our conversations with city council on October 13th to where we are now and where we hope to go from those points on. And so I think that the resolution is well stated for our intentions. And that if we postpone it to the January 5th, I mean, again, it's another kicking the can down the road when this resolution is adequate for where we are right now and all the cooperation and collaboration and discussions with city and the city council. It's an ongoing process with us, and this is just reflects that. And to come in at the last minute and say, let's move in a different direction, I just don't think it's warranted.
Thank you, Mr. Dannen. And for the record, we need your address, please?
Sure. 112 Cave Avenue, Manitou Springs.
Okay, great. Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions or comments now? If not, okay, council, Councilor Wilbrook?
Thanks, Mayor. And I saw that Julie Wolf had her hand up, too.
Oh, okay, well.
Before we do that, I would like to postpone this and maybe do a little bit of consideration of some of the edits that Mr. Todd proposed. But it was an interesting night tonight, right? And we had a lot of people ask a lot of questions and like, what are our values? And we talked a lot about trees, and I just want to remind everybody, this is one of Manitou's parks. This is our sledding hill. There are trees there. So I think some other comments that I will make is I really hope that Hiawatha Gardens would present at the same time we had the library work session. I understand that they couldn't. I'm not faulting anybody for that. But one of my big concerns about this is and about match and everything else that I keep saying at every meeting is we need, we're a city with a lot of capital needs. And I've yet to see the kind of comprehensive look at that, that I think I'd like to see before we make some of these really big decisions. So I'd really like to hear where we are with Hiawatha Gardens before moving forward on this as written. And there's just some things that, you know, we've really glossed over that are happening in the community that I think we're going to regret. And one of them is that we have had some alternative looks at what fixing this building and making it ADA compliant would look like. Those don't seem to get mentioned at these meetings. I'm not sure why. But I'm just saying they're out there. People are talking about them. I'm a little distressed that we've sort of moved in a direction not to go to the voters with this. That seemed to be what I heard in that work session. That distresses me. And I see a lot of parallels here between the fire tower training that happened before I was on council, that went on the ballot. It was going to be at Public Works. There was a lot of concern in that neighborhood about that. It didn't pass. There's been some really great progress on a fire training tower at a much reduced cost. I know that there's still some neighbors up in that area now that have some concerns. I think those will be resolved. But I see a lot of parallels here that aren't making me feel really comfortable. The other thing that I would say is that I loved Andy Vick's note in the Carnegie Springs Business Journal. I don't know if you read his editorial, any of you. But he talked about what a great partnership it was to have PPLD at the MAC. And I've said here, and I've said it many times, I'd really like to see that happen for a year and get a good comprehensive report on what worked and what didn't with that space and other things. And so we can't go for these grants till 2022. I think that there's some things about memorializing this that puts us on a path where we can only use the Thorpe plans if that's what we're raising money for, and we're telling people that. I'm not terribly comfortable with that because I think.
Susan, we lost you, if you can hear us. Susan? Judy, can you tell us anything? It looks like she may have to log out and come back.
Yeah, you're seeing the same thing I'm seeing. She's still, she's still on there, but somehow we missed her.
Okay, well, if it's all right. Counselor Wolf had her hand up next, I believe, so. And then we'll go to Counselor Chandler. Counselor Wolf?
Oh, thank you. I, I just wanted to comment that if you look at section one of the resolution, once you get past all those whereas's, it just says that we're moving forward with an RFP for final design and construction costs. My understanding of Bob Todd's presentation was that this only provides for construction costs. And how can you know what the construction costs are if you don't know what the design is? But that, it says right there, final design. So I, I don't know that that would address all of his concerns, but it already says that. And in response to Susan's comments, which I have shared those same concerns, I thought, wow. I've heard and seen some alternative drawings for the library other than the Thorpe sketch. And here we are, first reading, adopting Thorpe. And I thought, well, all right, you know. But I don't know if that's necessarily the best design either. And so when I look at this whereas, I'm assuming that the final design that we would be shelling out money for someone to do would be based on Thorpe, but that's not even required in this resolution. So theoretically, the RFP could allow the person to come up with a whole new drawing. I'm not sure what I'm recommending because I need to think about it, but I do, I share some of Susan's concerns in that respect. I wish she could come back. Oh, may I ask Christine, since we're waiting, may I ask a question of Christine, Mayor, in that respect?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. And then we'll, we'll hear from Counselor Chandler.
Okay, so Christine, when you were looking at this business here where it says that we're going to hire someone, put out an RFP for a final design, were you envisioning that the final design would be based on the preliminary design that was done by Mr. Thorpe?
There's inspiration there, and there's a process. There's a lot of public input. We recognize that, I recognize as a project manager and background engineering that, that what was, what was fully in the Thorpe drawings, there are opportunities for updating those. And there are, I wish Susan were here, Counselor Wilbrook. I would, oh, here she comes.
Susan, you're muted. Counselor Wilbrook, you're muted. Could you, could you unmute yourself for a second so we can figure out where you're at?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. My council iPad won't hold a charge, and I've got it plugged in. So I may just need to call in, but I'm not familiar with doing that. So maybe Julie could, not Julie, but Judy Morgan could send me an instruction via email on the phone-in process.
Oh, we have you now. We can hear you and see you.
I am like at 1%, just a warning.
Oh.
Okay, so Counselor, Counselor Wolf did make some comments here while you were gone, and she, she had some similar thoughts to yours. She was asking Christine some questions.
Thank you.
Susan, do you want a minute, do you want a minute to switch over to the phone so you don't, so we can have this conversation with you?
Absolutely. That would be wonderful. And I'm looking for Judy Morgan maybe to send me an email to my council email on how to do that.
Working on it right now.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry, guys.
No, it's okay. This is the world of Zoom.
It was at 100% when I started, and I looked up and it's at 1%. And it's been, I plugged it in like 30 minutes ago.
There she goes.
Anyway, that answers my question, Christine. That does. In other words, I would imagine it would be much more costly if someone is coming up with a brand new idea. And I know there are some people in town with strong feelings that their ideas are better than the Thorpe one. And so that would be my only hesitation here is that's true. This is, I'm, you know, it may tweak the Thorpe design, and it doesn't require Thorpe in here. But everyone's assumption, even though it doesn't say it in the resolution, is that the final design will be based on Thorpe. You know, so.
Well, those are fair, excuse me, those are fair, fair questions. And I am in regular communication as folks who have wanted to come forward and contribute to what they feel like might be a better alternative. One of those, I had a conversation, just recently today, had a conversation with, and you know, he had some concerns about where are we in the process, wanted to ensure that, that some of these other ideas are going to be considered. And so I think frankly, on an engineer, from an engine, from a design standpoint, and then getting into engineering, there's still a lot of work to go. You know, I do, if we scaled down the footprint and it's still in the spirit of the Thorpe process, that footprint that went through the planning, or excuse me, the historical commission and, and the community process, I think there's a lot of value to that, you know, keeping a similar footprint, whether it's slightly smaller or the same. But in terms of how it's used on the interior and how that's laid out, I think, I think there's, there's still active conversations that can be had. And we're, we're actively discussing that with, with the task force. There's going to be more public input processes. I see there's Counselor Wilbrook.
Also, actually, so that's really helpful information because that makes me conclude that this is premature. There's no reason to pay somebody $50,000 to come up some drawing. And then six weeks later, or two months later, after the holidays, our public process decides we don't like that drawing anymore. We want a whole different thing. So maybe I'm leaning more toward what Bob taught, well, anyway, yeah.
If we stop.
I wouldn't want to pay someone $50,000 and say, well, we might want a whole different design. It might be smaller. We haven't decided if we really want one or two bathrooms. We don't know if the elevator should be inside or outside, but here's 50 grand, you know, let us know. And then after the drawing's done, maybe the public process will decide, no, let's start over with something different. Like, that's just silly. But maybe we could nail down the public process first so we know what the heck they're trying to finalize.
What I'm, what I'm looking for in this RFP is to understand what the cost is going to be to get there. Right now, if I, if I don't bring in any kind of architect, we're stagnant. And so we'd like to get that started. I'm, I'm looking forward to a phased, a phased design process where we continue with the input. It's critical that the Pike's Peak Library is a partner in this. I'm, from a timeline perspective, I would like to hit the grant cycle this year. And the grant cycle can support some of this outreach, some of the final design where we get to. So that's some of my interest in, I don't believe that we have to wait for grants until 2022. We can get moving on that this year. As well, you know, getting further along and understanding what our costs are going to be, that helps us put forward a business plan.
But how can you have the cost if you don't have the elevators you want, or how many bathrooms you want, or if it's going to be, you know, twice as big as it is now, or just 30% larger? So to me, I appreciate everything you're saying, but you don't get caught, you know, that's like, you don't get cost on something that hasn't been designed yet. So I mean, and you don't design something and pay a designer to design something if you're still having community input on what we want. So that's my, that's the problem I'm having. I appreciate your answers. I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I agree. You need cost, but I, I think it's premature if you don't know what you're, what you're estimating.
All right, thank you. Counselor Chandler had her hand up, and then Denise. I also want to see if Susan can hear us. Susan Wilbrook, can, can you hear us? Can we hear you?
I can hear you. I can hear you.
We can hear you. Okay, so you're, you're, you're back in the meeting. Okay, great. Okay, so thank you. Counselor Chandler, please? You're muted, Judith.
Did Counselor Wilbrook have a comment to make? Because she would precede me. Or was she just?
No, she like.
So.
We're just trying to see if we could talk to her and.
So. I, I.
You take the floor.
Okay, thank you. I think we can all agree that the Carnegie Library is such an iconic building and that we would love to preserve it as a library and work with the PPLD to reinstate library services at the Carnegie Library at some point. I, you know, what a difference a year makes, right? Especially this year. And while I, I looked at the Thorpe drawings and, and conceptual ideas about the library, it is, we're moving into 2021, and I think it is reasonable to consider Bob Todd's and other people's input about where we are now. So if we could agree on, yes, we want to refurb our library, and yes, we want it to be a library, I think it's a reasonable time to look at all conceptual drawings that might be submitted and to consider all input at this point. So, so I don't, I don't, you know, I know this has been a very long process, and it's been going on for decades. But I do want the people to know that, yes, we want to preserve the library. Yes, we want it to be a library. And yes, we're at a position where, what is a library? I mean, we have to ask ourselves in 2021, what is a library? And does the Thorpe plan fit into the, the, the long-term conceptual idea of what we want to have to be a library? And I'm not saying that the Thorpe plan is, is, is a neanderthal. I'm just saying that maybe we need to take a look at introducing another, other concept drawings and architectural submissions to the library. So yes, I want to move forward. Yes, I want it to be a library. And yes, I think it's a great time to look at a plethora of ideas of what the library will look like.
Thank you. Denise, I believe you had your hand up?
No, I just, I, I want to make sure I understand, just so that, and maybe everybody else understands, but what I'm hearing is you want to take a step back and get more public participation regarding what the library looks like at this time. Is that what I'm hearing from everyone?
Several council people certainly, I think.
Because I believe, and I don't know when this group first started presenting, but I, I think they were going down the path saying, yes, we want to go with that Thorpe. And then that's the direction that you gave them a couple of months ago, maybe three months ago, that you said, yes, this is the way we're going. And then I'm hearing tonight, you want to take a moment, some are wanting to say, let's take a moment and let's get more public input. And that's all I'm asking is that the direction that you're looking at?
Well, we've got some other council people to hear from also, so stay tuned. Okay. Mayor Protem.
I, I don't see what Counselor Chandler and Counselor Wolf are saying is mutually exclusive to what's in this resolution. I would hate to see us, I, I think that in, and Christine, please correct me if I'm wrong, but as you finalize the design based on a concept, which was the Thorpe concept, I, that might be an assumption, but that was my assumption from our last meeting in October when we discussed this, that we would go forward with, to get that, that final design, which is, which was not finalized in Thorpe by any stretch of the imagination, and get the cost estimates so that we could keep this train on the tracks as opposed to stopping the train or taking it, putting it on a whole different track again. I just, I just see us keep going backwards on this, on this initiative as opposed to moving forward. And I don't care, you know, to me, even if we move infinitesimally forward, that's better than just going backwards again. So I don't see where it's mutually exclusive, what's in this resolution. But correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, there's part of, part of what has been going on from my, from my standpoint, what I've been involved in has been talking with, getting some input, informal input from architects that are experienced in the library world, including architects that have worked in Pike's Peak Library District. And there's, there's general consensus that we can take this, we can take the concepts to the next level. And so, no, moving forward on this doesn't, it doesn't throw out the Thorpe concepts. It doesn't throw out any of the thoughts and recommendations and suggestions that folks in the community have. It, it just continues us on that, on that path that, that has been worked on with the idea that, that we move forward. So you're, you're right in that point. I'm not, I'm not sure what I can provide differently through a public process. A public process will cost tens of thousands of dollars. And so by, what I would, what I would like in this is to have cost estimates that, that give different options to us. We don't know what we can afford. I, I can't, you know, I can't say that, yes, we're taking, we have to take this to the voters. I don't know that. I don't know that, until I get some, until we get a couple of different cost ideas. And the fundraising as well, I don't think, I don't think there's, we're, we're not even close to final designs that we can take to anyone for fundraising or to grants. It's just trying to move that engine further down the tracks, if you will. I have trains on my mind, just coming from.
Yeah. So we've just done such an extensive community process on this already. I, it's just, I get frustrated when we've got projects that go on for 20 years like this one has. And it's like every period, you know, you get a new council and you got to start basically over again. And I, I just don't see the value in that. It's, it's inefficient to say the least. So I would, I would like to get this resolution passed because to, as I interpret it, it makes a great deal of sense. And it would be very useful to continue this project, to continue working on this project. So I see the issuing an RFP as being pretty important at this point as the next step.
Thank you. Mr. Shada, we just, we haven't heard from Mr. Shada yet or Mr. Bremner. So John, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, it sounds like to me there's some, I understand Nancy's point, but this is the messy part of democracy, you know? And the section one clearly says the issuance of an RFP or final design and construction by a qualified firm. So I think the big question the council needs to ask is, are we, if, if, if this is based on the Thorpe ideas, appears to be so, which is what's all embedded in all these ordinances and resolutions by reference, okay? Then we should be, we should be ready to go, but maybe we need to have the discussion about whether we're done with the process. Yes, I understand Nancy, things take years and years and years and don't get done. Okay? But the reality of it is that's just life. And maybe we are not at the point to doing final design and construction cost.
Thank you, Mr. Shada. Mr. Bremner?
I have no comment.
Oh, okay. All right.
Julie's hand was up, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Julie. Yeah.
I was just going to say, I don't think it needs to spend tens of thousands of dollars for public input. I, I suppose one could spend tens of thousands of dollars without public input, but I'm not suggesting that we spend tens of thousands of dollars. I'm not even suggesting we hire one of those public input facilitators, which I'm not in favor of that stuff in generally, in general. But I'm just saying have some public meetings to see in general, maybe even have people submit their drawings and have the, you know, the newspaper publish, you know, the three most popular designs and see if people want to weigh in. You don't need to spend $20,000 for that. You don't need to hire somebody and have all those meetings. But I, I don't, I, I'm not convinced that we're ready for final design. And, and I think that just to say, oh, we're going to do an RFP is, is very perplexing to me because I've read RFPs, I've drafted RFPs. How the heck, that's like saying, gee, I'd like someone to build a house for me. And it's going to be somewhere in El Paso County and I, I'm not really sure how many square feet it will be or exactly which neighborhood. But you know, here's $50,000. Let me know if anybody wants to draw it for me. Well, come on. You need to decide certain basic things before you pay somebody to give you a final drawing. So that's why I'm personally backtracking on this.
Thank you.
Question, and Rob, I see your, your finger up, but I'm going to ask, let me ask a question because you're the guy that was going to probably respond to it. If we were to take the, the resolution as you proposed it last week, and if we just struck the part about asking, asking for an RFP at this point, I'm wondering how much that would, would that handicap you, handicap you a lot? I mean, that would still give us a little wiggle room to, to play with some of these other ideas, but it might give your group most of what you need so you can go out and continue your work. I mean, until we have two and a half million dollars figured out, it's kind of a, in a sense, it's academic. On the other hand, I also see you have to have plans to, to get a cost to. So Rob, if you'd make your comment and also if you could address my question, please.
Sure. Having the resolution passed tonight, as Nancy was saying, does keep us moving forward. We are in a momentum, aggressive momentum. And by diverting, like all the years past, we are just now at a standstill. And we have a narrow window of time to get this done. And we need to start making progress and rather than being sidetracked. It's not to say that the counselor's thoughts on this and perspective is not to be considered. It's just that in the consideration, we need to continue to move forward. And we, our task force is a community-based task force, for one. It's grassroots and we have a task force and a list of at least 50 people who have shown interest in the work that we're doing. We keep them updated monthly and some of them share with us their thoughts. And so one of our subcommittees is a community outreach group where we will work with the city in developing a, a channel of communication with the community. That was always our intention. But to going back to your, your question, Mr. Mayor, the first step was we need a resolution so we can continue in the progress that we're making. That we, that you approved back in October, that we move in this direction, which we have. And we brought that back to you on the eighth of December. And from there, we've been moving forward in that same direction. And so it's just, it's confusing. It's frustrating that yet we're being sidelined again. And when I say we, I'm talking about the we of 20, 20 years of involvement in this process. So that's how I feel. I would then turn it over to Christine to better address the notion of deleting section one and trying to approve the rest, the remainder of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Dan. Christine, I think you've already kind of spoken to that, but if you'd like to add on to it.
Sure. The RFP would, is trying to not, it's not just a, I have a, I appreciate your example, Counselor Wolf. You know, that I have a house somewhere in El Paso County. I'm not going to be asking for those final construction costs until a design is settled on. And the design is going to be considered, those, those architects, whoever that firm is, is going to receive what was put together as a part of the Thorpe process. Input from Pike's Peak Library District architects, as well as I have, I've only received one other set of proposed drawings. And so those have actually already been forwarded on to, to those architects as well for, for just consideration. And, and so, you know, I think this is, it's not a, it's an all in one. It's, it's a, it's a process. And so we won't, we won't come, we won't come back with, here's a final design and here's, here's a construction cost. Vote on it.
But that's what, that's what the ordinance says, Christine. Then revise the ordinance because.
Julie, let, let Christine finish. Okay, please? And then we'll come back. Okay. We'll let you finish your, finish your thought there and then.
Sure, sure. No, no, no problem. So, so what section one says is that planning staff move forward with the issuance of an RFP for final design and construction cost development. It doesn't have to happen all in one step. That's not like, when I'm working on a major project, there, there are a lot of designs that go into what the final looks like and a lot of inputs. So it says, final design and construction cost development by a qualified firm, excuse me, using funds established. So this doesn't, it doesn't take us to beginning construction. It doesn't go into what the, you know, half dozen to a dozen steps are to get us to final design. And then from approval of a final design to that construction cost development, I mean, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a phased process. And that's what I am intending for the RFP to clearly state is that this is a phased process. They don't, they don't get paid all in one lump sum. It's, it's done by task. And there are multiple tasks in this anticipated RFP to get it, some of these exact concerns.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem had her hand up next, I believe.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if people would find, would be more comfortable with the language that Mr. Todd does have in his, under section one. So instead of saying final design and construction cost development, it simply says alternative designs and construction cost estimates. So take out that final and just, just say alternatives.
I said.
Yeah, Christine, you want to respond there?
I didn't, in the conversation today, I didn't understand what, what we're trying to get at with alternative. I'm not familiar. I'm sorry if I, harkening back to the conversation you guys had with Dole earlier. In the, in the design world, I'm, I'm not familiar with the alternative being the primary. So if we had, if we had two designs in there, that would make more sense to me. So I'm not sure what we're getting at there. And it would be very confusing to put together an RFP seeking just an alternative design.
Under, got it. Thank you.
Just to be a doubles advocate, if we, in section one, if we just struck the word final design, does that give you a little more wiggle room to, I mean, to negotiate? It sounds like what you're proposing is an iterative process, which is pretty typical of an engineering and architectural process. You build a little, you think a little, you design, you, you know, you, you work, you work through it, but, but you're allowed to go forward. You're allowed to, to make progress. So, so I, you know, my, my personal thought is, you know, I like the resolution pretty much the way it is. I don't think it's that confining. I think it more, as I see it, this enables the library people to go out and pursue grants and pursue money and let us do some design work. I don't know that it hems us in and keeps us from going down a different path. If we, if at some point we decided, you know, I say we as a community decided we can't come up with quite as much money as we need for Thorpe design, then we, then the question is we, we scale it back. How do we do that? I mean, that's maybe the reality that we'll find ourselves in, in nine months or a year or something like that. I'm just guessing. But I, I could see this as being actionable. I, I think the comments that people have made about postponing and getting a clear idea, idea. I, I, I see that as also being valid, but a, I'm kind of anguished to think that, you know, it's been 25 years since we first started thinking about making that, that building ADA compliant. And I, I don't want the library task force to lose momentum. I want the community to be able to, to get something done. I'd like to see dirt turned in our lifetime. Get it in. That's my two cents. Counselor Wolf, I think you have perhaps had your hand up. Okay. All right.
Fair to make a motion.
Okay.
Unless someone, well, people can still discuss it. I move that we approve resolution 3620, a resolution to affirm support for expansion of historical Carnegie library building. With the amendment to section one, take out the word final.
Second that.
I'll second.
Okay. Counselor Chandler, seconds. Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? The motion then is to accept the, the resolution as presented with the one correction under section one, we would strike the word final out of that first sentence. Okay. You know, Counselor Wolf?
We have to make sure Susan can vote.
Okay. Yeah, just quick.
Julie, I'm here on the phone. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. So that's fine.
Perfect. Thank you, Julie.
Any, any further discussion? Okay. Well, then let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Raise your hand. Three, we have five in favor. All opposed, say nay. Raise your hand, Julie. And then Susan, how do you say? Nay. Okay. So yeah, resolution passes five to two with that one correction. Okay. Thanks, everybody. This is, you know, democracy is a slow process. We worked through it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll, we'll take all of, all of the concerns and considerations under discussion, definitely. But we appreciate you allowing us to continue in the momentum that we've been having in trying to get this thing done. So thank you.
Go out and get two and a half, $3 million.
Okay, I'm on it.
Thank you all. Okay, let's see. Next business. Hey, an ordinance approving two loans from the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority, authorizing the forms and execution of the loan agreements and governmental agency bonds to evidence such loans. Authorizing the construction of two projects, prescribing other details in connection therewith and declaring an emergency. And I guess I should probably explain, my understanding, this is an emergency ordinance, so it will. It would need a unanimous vote and it would. It would just be, there would not be a second hearing on this because it is an emergency. And my understanding is, it's, we've got to pay a, a timing issue. This needs to be done by the end of the year. So unless we wanted to have a special meeting, and, and given the, the way the paper chain has gone, that's. It's kind of where, why we're in the situation we're in. On the other hand, I think it's fairly straightforward. Denise, did you want to add on to that?
I was gonna say, Jeff Park, Jeff Parker, do you want to add to that or Becca of how we got to where we are and why we are here? I know Jeff and Becca has both been involved with that and why it's had to be an emergency.
It may be better for Becca because I don't have the, the full background leading up to this, but I mean, I think that ultimately it was the approval, the process that took as much time, but I'll let Becca give the.
Right. And when their board met, et cetera. Okay. Sorry, I did not mean to interrupt.
Okay, so this has been a very, very long process. It all started back when we got our financial advisors, beginning of the year. And then we met with them a few times to figure out how we wanted to finance. Our projects, our water sewer projects for the year. And we ultimately decided to go the route of what a lot, a lot of small cities do in Colorado. They go to the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority and use their revolving loan program. It's a much more cost efficient than for us to, to. Float a bond issue. There's a ton of work that involves floating a bond issue and there's a. You have to get certifications and things and ratings and stuff. So this was just the way that most small cities and towns do it in, in Colorado. And so that's why we did it. And I included a document in here, in your attachments about the state revolving phone, fund loan program. And it's just a two-page document. The first page talks a bit about, about the program. And then the second page shows all the, I call them hoops that must be jumped through. And this was actually an easier process than floating bonds, but when I referenced them as hoops to the Colorado Water. Resources and Power Development people, they said, no, no, they're not hoops. They're, they're milestones. So. We started back in, I believe it was May. It was May when we started this process. And we have now come trudging to the final conclusion. And we were actually, in November, we were told, you've done everything you, you need to do. And then we were told we had to wait until December fourth because the board only meets once a month. And we had missed that timeframe in November. So and then they met on the fourth and they approved the loans. And the two loans are for the, one is going to be from the water fund and one is going to be from the sewer fund. And they're twenty-year loans. I know in the actual loan paperwork, it says something along the lines of, of. The verbiage is final maturity shall not be later than. Well, it can be earlier than that. I mean, and the later than it was 25 years. But it can be earlier than that. And that's what it is in our case. The, the final maturity is actually in 2040. And the water loan is for. Eight thousand, excuse my reach here, eight hundred and twenty seven thousand, two hundred dollars. And the yearly payment will be fifty three thousand, six hundred and eighty two dollars and forty four cents. Then the sewer loan, which they call Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund, which is a mouthful. Is for five hundred and fifty four thousand, four hundred dollars. And it is going to be the yearly payment will be thirty five thousand, nine hundred and seventy eight dollars and sixty six cents. And these are for the Clark's Lee Water. No, excuse me. The Clark's Lee Mountain View Road Projects. Which we got a resolution from City Council early in the year saying we go ahead and start the process of getting all that done. Because that whole process takes another lengthy time. And if we waited until after we had the funding in place. Then it would still be six months from now before we, you know, get started on that. Now, the reason why it's an emergency ordinance, why we wanted it done in one day. Is because if it slides over into next year. Then we fall back on some of our milestones. And then the main one is the taper requirement to prove that we are. That, that both these funds are enterprise funds, which can take on debt without going to a vote of the citizens. And so we didn't want to have to now turn around and go back and prove that we are an enterprise fund. Because we, what we used was, you have to use a year's worth of data. So we went from like. Gosh, I guess May of 2019 to November of, of 2020, we use that data. And if we slide over into 2021, then we've got to turn around and we got to use from. January of 2020 to December of 2020, if, if we've gone over into a new year. So the whole point is to try not to have to jump back through hoops that we've already jumped through. And that's why we want to do this. And city councils over already approved the projects. And if you decide not to approve the, the loans. What we would then have to turn around and do is use up a ton of the fund balance in these two funds to pay for these projects. And let me tell you, there is enough in those fund balances to pay for it, but then they would be really shrunk down. And. We don't want to shrink those enterprise fund balances down lower than, than necessary. This is not that, that wasn't the plan. The plan was to. Was to get loans on these. And so that's what we're doing now. Any questions?
Julie, Counselor Wolf.
Thank you. Thank you, Becca. I'm just, for my own education and thank you for working on all of this. Or maybe this is a Jeff Parker question. Can we just do this anytime we want to call something an emergency, then we can just do it? Or what, what is the criteria for magnitude to circumvent the normal process? And declare an emergency? Is there any guidelines and are we within those guidelines?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, there's, there's, there's no set guidelines. It's generally a legislative determination by city councils. It's given deference. Your, your determination was an emergency, what's not is given deference by the courts. You know, ultimately, it, it can't be a sham. It, it can't be something that. You know, is, is basically shown to be intended to circumvent, you know, the, the standard regular ordinance readings. But a lot of things can be an emergency and economic issues can be an emergency as well. Like including, including losing out on good loan rates, et cetera. So, I mean, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I would like to just speak about the project and the importance of the project. It's, I've been in that neighborhood. It is in my ward. It's the number one capital improvement project for water and sewer. We have had lots of payouts, insurance payouts as a result of people's basements and. So on constantly being flooded with sewage. I, I've seen it. It's horrible. It was a mistake that the city made at installing this many years ago, and it absolutely needs to be corrected. So, you know, I, it's, and I know we've been working on this and staff's, not we, the staff has been working on it. However, we did raise, last year in the last council, we did raise the water rates in order to be able to do things like this. So I would just really encourage us to move forward on this. And I'd be prepared to make a motion, but. I, I don't want to do that until I feel pretty good about, that we're going to get a unanimous vote on. So I'd like any discussion, any concerns that people might have first.
Counselor Chandler, please.
So I, I guess my first question is, is this a typical situation? Do we have any precedent for this happening before as an emergency? Or is this, is this? Not typical, typical that we, so, and, and I, and I address this to Jeff Parker. I guess my concern is we, you know, this is an emergency and we need a unanimous vote. And it's an important thing, but is there precedent?
Uh, you know, I, I can't, I can't recall if the city has had an emergency ordinance adopted for a financial reason. I can say that other clients of our firm have made similar findings in the past that. You know, losing out on good rates, losing out on loans that you may not get in the future is an emergency. What I usually don't like to declare an emergency is something that could have been avoided if people had basically done things properly. My understanding in this case is that this really wasn't any delay on the city's part. It was just a function of when the funds became available. And when things got reviewed. So I can say that I'm relatively comfortable. This is. Meets the, meets the criteria for an emergency, provided that you all agree because your decision is given deference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Wolf.
Oh, I just want to say it's a great interest rate. I'd love to finance all my debt at this rate. It's a great interest rate and it's an essential need. And as much as people in the community that might be listening might think, oh, my gosh, you're going to spend that much money on someone else's neighborhood. The truth is, and I think it was mentioned, it's expensive for the city to keep paying our own staff to constantly repair things. That break and you just have to go piecemeal rather than getting the job done right. So. I, I, I'm comfortable with this and I think, you know, thank goodness, there's such a great low interest rate that we can, I assume it's a fixed rate. Loan was my understanding. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Oh, yeah. I mean, geez, how much lower can you get? So I think it's fabulous.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors with comments? I guess I'll mention that, you know, a number of years ago, I was at a city council meeting for some, with some other reason, but I remember an individual got up and he lives on Clark's Lee. And he was in front of council complaining that it was something like the second or third time he'd had sewage flooding into his basement. And, and, and it cost the city some money to get that cleaned up. And it's. Certainly this would mean his, that guy's definition of an emergency. And if it was your basement, it would, it would definitely be an emergency. I, I think it's, and, and city staff had anticipated this whole process. I think it was premeditated. It was well organized. It was planned. There were a couple of delays that, that they were external. And so in that sense, I think the city staff acted very responsibly and with, with good insight and with good. With good vision on this. And I think we, I think we legitimately meet the, the full definition of emergency. I'm not a lawyer, but I, I know what it's like to have your basement full of sewage. So. Anyway, it's my two cents. Counselor Chandler.
I'd like to proceed to call a question and vote.
I'll make a motion first, if that's okay. I think we need to make a motion before we call the question.
Sorry, Mayor Protem, I, I, sorry.
No problem. I appreciate it because it does get, it does. Anyway, I move to approve ordinance number one, six, two, zero. An ordinance approving two loans from the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority, authorizing the forms, the execution of loan agreements. And governmental agency bond to evidence such loans, authorizing the construction of two projects, prescribing other details in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Chandler, second. So we have a motion, a second. If there's no further discussion, let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
What about Susan? Susan.
Susan, Susan, how did you, what did you, how did you vote?
She said aye.
He said aye four times. So she voted four times.
Well, that makes it really unanimous. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Coming to the home stretch here. Time to receive or act on council correspondence. Does anybody have anything?
Mayor, I have, this is Susan Walbrook. I have one question. I've received some questions about the five star program that the state's working on. And I know that. They're working on that program to certify businesses to be open if they pass certain restrictions. I believe Mesa County may be the county that they're going to test that in. But are we, obviously, the question is, will we, will we move to do that? And will that require? City council to approve that is the question that I got about that. And the second question I got is, I'm assuming we are, it's still, we're still at the red level. And it doesn't look like that's going to break any differently based on the numbers. And I just, I figured that maybe even in their city administrative reports. Denise or Roy could maybe address that, both of those questions. So if they're going to address them in the city administrative report, we can just wait.
Denise is nodding here, so I take that as an affirmative response. Okay. Did you have, okay, so we'll get that answer for you. Susan, did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor Wolf.
Do we have a lien on that property, Jeff, at Pawnee?
Um, the ants, oh, I just looked at that issue. I'm sorry. I want to.
Okay, I, I didn't mean to spring it on you, but I'm really concerned.
We just, Jeff, you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Go ahead, Becca. You can respond.
I've written a letter. I've got all the invoices together. I have verified there's not going to be any more invoices. I'm coming into the office tomorrow. In addition to getting the loan documents printed, I am mailing the letter, the official letter. To the owner, along with the invoices. And then I'm going to notify Jeff's office, which starts the countdown to getting the lien on.
Yeah, so the way that your code reads is that the lien basically arises when the payment is 30 days. When, when, when payment has not been made within 30 days of the notice of the bill. But I'm, I want to argue a little differently that, that there is notice of the cleanup. There was an abatement notice that was basically filed against the property. So I think people will be given. Anybody trying to buy the property should have noticed that there's an issue and is potential for a, a charge to arise.
Oh, and the, the abatement notice is filed with the clerk and recorder?
My, I think that it was. I think we, I asked that question last meeting. I need to basically verify that.
Well, yeah, because in the last meeting I asked, and I got a very nebulous answer because. If it hasn't been filed with the clerk and recorder, then a bona fide purchaser has a defense to the lien. And I tried to ask you about that last time and you misunderstood my question and, and answered something else. But I'm just concerned if there's a bona fide purchaser that isn't on actual notice. Under real estate law, isn't that a problem? I mean, I'm not a real estate lawyer, but you know, it's kind of basic.
Yeah, although city, city, city costs can be different than actually recording instruments. Maybe we could look at this, I can discuss with you offline tomorrow because I don't want to go into.
And here's, here's the reason I haven't asked you about it, Jeff. I don't want to incur expense for the city to answer my question. It's much more cost effective just to get it done. So if we've already, you know, if we have to wait another 30 days during the waiting period from the notice that Becca is going to send out. Then can you just, I mean, I, I don't want to be accused of directing staff, but I want there to be something filed with the clerk and recorder's office. To put, you know, BFP on notice, a bona fide purchaser.
Yeah, so, so here, actually, it's a great point. I'm looking back at my, my conversations with Rebecca from a few days ago. And so what, what I, I had directed to happen is that the, the actual letter with the amount that's. And so what, what I, I had directed to happen is that the, the actual letter with the amount that's owed be recorded. So with the letter that she's working on, yeah, and I apologize. I kind of forgot the timing of everything when you asked me the question. I just wasn't ready to answer it. So, so that'll be recorded once it's done, which is, I think Rebecca's working on, she says, tomorrow. And then we'll still have the 30 days for the official lien to, to, uh, attach to the property pursuant to your code, but there will be the notice.
Oh, and then we'll be protected right away. That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Issue I had mayor was, um, I recall that, um, we were told that we have to have something in by Christmas to Mountain Metro regarding any, um, public discussion. And I was left frankly, a little confused. I mean, the sense I had at first was if we want changes, we have to let them know by Christmas. And then it was like, oh, unless it's a teeny weeny weeny little tiny change, forget it. You got to wait until six more months or something. So I, I wasn't really clear on that, but I would really like to be some public process on the, um, importance and frequency of use of, um, shuttle 33 after 6:00 PM. And I, and I, and I want to see if that's just a waste of pollution and a waste of money. And I don't care if it's Colorado Springs that's wasting their money. If, if they refuse to give us money to help pay the shuttle, other than when nobody uses it, then they can just use that money for their own general fund. Um, but I'd like that to be added and I didn't know if, if there was clear direction to staff on that issue at the end of our last meeting. You're muted, uh, mayor.
Sorry. Thank you. Uh, yeah, as, as I recall, we, we did discuss that, uh, last week, that six to eight o'clock window. Guy in, 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 uh, Mr. Batuli, he had, I, I think he said they were constrained by the agreement, the existing agreement and,
The existing agreement expires on New Year's Eve. Aren't we, we're looking, our five-year contract ends the end of December and there's some kind of mandatory public process that happens in January. And I, I'm not clear about that either, but, um, I do remember if we wanted changes, we had to bring it up to them by, at first he said December and then Denise wisely asked, can you be more precise? And he said before Christmas. So I'd like there to be public con, I'd like that to be included uh, with the other things that we had discussed, which I think was uncontroversial, uh, having to do with the bus going either down to Serpentine if we're not worried about construction. We're only going down to the Ruxton turnabout if there is concern about construction. And there seemed to be a difference of opinion on that issue. But I just wanted to get clarity because I think this is our last meeting before Christmas. So I want to know, I want to make sure that Denise is, is clear on what we're asking her to do. I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, that's a little better. Yeah.
I'll try to scream again. Sorry. Um, I'll reach out to Brian tomorrow, make sure that he has exactly what questions. And then I'll forward those to you, to all of council, to, to say what he, what he thought we were asking. And then I'll make sure that this is part of that question. So I'll try to get that forwarded to you by Friday. It may take me a couple of days to get back, for Brian to get back with me, but I'll follow up with, with all of council on an email on that one.
Well, thank you so much. That's all I have.
Okay, good. Okay. Thank you, Julie. Um, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, just addressing Julie's question, um, my understanding, and I thought I had it pretty clearly, was that the only thing we could address in public process was going to Serpentine in the January timeframe. And that are other questions of which there were numerous ones, but we first needed data that Roy was going to go get us on the various, um, how many riders, where they were getting off, how much things were costing and really put it together for us so that we could determine what questions we wanted to ask. And then we also talked about having a one-year contract instead of a five-year contract so that we could potentially, hopefully, participate in the second public process of the year. So that's what I took away as I believe what we, the guidance we had provided, albeit it was very, um, complicated discussion.
Thank you, Nancy. May I just ask you one clarification, Nancy? It was my understanding also that there was some dispute about whether it makes sense for the bus, whether it's safe for the bus to go down to Serpentine.
Yes. Doll was going to let us know about, um, if it would conflict with the MAPS project. The construction in the MAPS project.
So Doll's, so Doll will make that decision and then that's what will be submitted for the public process?
I, I can't tell you the answer to that. My sense was, is that he was going to come back and let us, let us, I don't know. I, I don't know the answer. That's a great question, Julie.
We won't see you before Christmas.
So let me get all this, um, and I'll send it out on Friday. And then if you have a question, give me a call or if there's something else, so we can talk about it offline. But let me get with Brian because Roy is off. So let me get with Brian and make sure I understand exactly what questions Roy submitted to him.
And then also Denise is a follow-up is Roy, do you believe, is he still, is that still on his agenda to get back with us next year early on about? Because he said he had that data in his office or that he'd already collected the data. It was just a matter of providing it to us.
I know he and Doll were working on it and I have not seen it at this point. I know that they were working on it, but I have not seen any of the numbers yet.
But it's already collected. Is that right?
Yeah, but they had to do some analysis with it. And so I have not seen that at this point.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
And other council members, do you have anything to report? Okay, I guess not. Um, one thing that I do have is, uh, in January, we'll be looking at council, um, liaison assignments. So in the next day or two, I'll send you out a, a list of the, the, uh, well, a copy of the resolution that we adopted last January. So you'll know who's doing what. Um, if you want to make a change or something, that would probably be a good idea to get a little bit of thought to that. I know, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Fortune is on quite a number of boards. And I believe she would, uh, encourage someone else to do the Fountain Creek, uh, watershed, uh, service. So if, if anyone has bandwidth to do that, that would be, uh, I think she would appreciate that. Anyway, we'll give that a little bit of thought and we'll come back to that idea in January. That's all I've got. Let's move on then to the city administrator's report. Mr. Chaney is off this week and next week. And so it's on you, Denise.
Okay, just a couple of quick things is, um, regarding the work on, um, Manitou Avenue, the gas line. I wanted to let you know that 1,100 feet have been installed. 700 feet is waiting on the road to be installed. And then after that is installed, um, it will be, uh, on hold until the springtime. So that one thing that they will do is they'll do some cold patch repair throughout the winter. And then after the winter comes, then they'll repair that, um, the avenue accordingly. So just wanted to share that, that, that is moving. Regarding the, um, five-star program, Susan, we, I'm working with Leslie on that to see what that will take and how quickly it could happen. So we're in those conversations. Also want to let you know that I, I know that the city of Corral Springs and the, um, county has approved the tax refund. And we're looking at how we could do something like that here. And I hope to get an email out to you. I was writing it today, but I have not gotten it out. Becca was sending me some stuff. So I hope to get an email out to you tomorrow of, instead of that, maybe that 50,000 that we used, um, for loans, maybe do some type of grants. So we're working with the chamber on that and it's the chamber money instead of doing a refund because we have a lot of restaurants that are needing money right now. So I will be following up with an email to all of you with that, once we kind of put that together and, um, get that out to you. So those are the things that we're really working on at this point as we finish up the year. And as always, I want to say happy holidays to all of you and your family and to everybody in Manitou. And, um, hope you enjoy the holidays. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I will say happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I hope everybody has a good next two weeks and you get a chance to relax and spend time with your family. So we'll see you next year. Okay?
Merry Christmas. Great to work with you guys here. Happy holidays.
Good job, everybody. Good meeting. Thanks.